Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting here on May 4th, 2021. Before we begin, I just have one announcement to make. The City of Fort Lauderdale is hosting commission meetings in both a virtual and in-person format. I see that we've gathered up another commissioner now, Commissioner Glassman. Thank you for participating here in person.
Gathered up? Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you mayor, you and the vice mayor look so lonely. I just felt like I needed to come and keep you company.
Add to the entertainment.
Thank you.
Argue in person.
So for additional information on how to view or sign up to speak at a meeting, please visit the following website. It's bit, B I T dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. Again, that's bit, B I T dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Also, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, I will call upon you when it is your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers into listen-only mode, and you will be unmuted to speak when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and maybe either hang up to exit the meeting, or you may continue to listen to the remainder of the meeting. Okay, having said that, so let's start. Start with our communications now. Unfortunately, I don't have my computer with me. It's being fixed. So I don't have the communications in front of me. So, Mr. City Manager, do you want to?
Sure, I can help out.
Elijah's?
Yep, I sure can. So we'll start. There's the first one from the Sustainability Advisory Board. And this was one that was before us at the last meeting. We carried it through to this meeting. Why don't I ask Mr. Hadwin to come to the podium and explain the background in this communication to the commission?
Can you speak into the microphone?
Not on.
Make sure the microphone is on.
Hi, I'm Glenn Hadwin, Sustainability Manager. I think this communication will be explained during Business Three. It's in support of the policies we'll be discussing during Business Three. And I'll be talking a little bit about the history and how we met with the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Okay, great. Very good.
Great. And then the second one is from the Education Advisory Board. We'll ask Zoe Saunders to come explain this one, and I think you have several people signed up to speak on this item.
If you say eight, several, yes.
Well, they're all relatives.
Hi, could you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Zoe Saunders, Chief Education Officer. The Education Advisory Board has been receiving regular updates on the Stranahan Cafeteria construction project over the past several months. And at the April EAB meeting, they delved a little bit deeper into the background on this project and also heard from the community on several concerns regarding the proposed project scope. So I'll highlight for you just a few points that were noted during the discussion. For historical context, the EAB discussed the analysis of Stranahan's facility conditions. Back in 2005, a custody analysis was conducted on the buildings of Stranahan's campus, and eight were determined to have a custody designation. The custody designation indicates that it is more economical to replace the building than to renovate. The custody report is the basis upon which the EAB has prioritized community outreach and support for the Bennett Elementary School project and is a large driver of the discussion around Stranahan. Regarding the scope of the SMART project, the SMART bond project is the bond that Broward County Public Schools has received to make building improvements. The SMART bond scope for Stranahan did not include building replacements. And the project is being pursued in two phases. Phase one is most of the buildings. That's already underway. The majority of that work has been completed. We're now in Phase Two, which is exclusively focused on the cafeteria. And as that's in design phase, there's been a lot of community discussion around that project. Concerns with the cafeteria that have come to light. One, the community wants to make sure that the cafeteria is supporting the current and the future enrollment growth for Stranahan High School. Also want to look at sightlines for safety. There's been a lot of conversations around the bathrooms and making sure that there's access to the bathrooms in the interior of the cafeteria. The current project's scope has the cafeterias in a building outside and adjacent to the cafeteria. The community has also requested a cost analysis of versus renovating and rebuilding. The school district has provided a high-level cost analysis for those three different options. And the community is interested in getting a little bit more details around that to further evaluate the return on investment of the project. The EAB is respectfully requesting that the mayor and city commission petition the school board of Broward County to ensure the project's scope of the cafeteria fully meets the needs of the Stranahan students. Representatives from the school districts are participating in the meeting today to provide clarification and help answer questions. I definitely appreciate their participation in this meeting as we all want what is in the best interest of Stranahan. Several community members are also present. I would like to thank specifically the Riverside Park Neighborhood Association for all their support of Stranahan. So as we talk about the facility conditions and needs for improvement at Stranahan, I also want to make sure that we're balancing that conversation with all the great things that are underway at the schools. So just want to highlight a couple of things. Two programs at Stranahan High School have been recognized by the NAF. That's the National Network of Education, Business and Community.
This is a communication to the commission from the board. This is to report on the project. So if we just want to give that background and then let the public speak on the item,
Absolutely.
let's, uh, let's, let's keep it to that for this part of the meeting.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Sharing that since the EAB member wasn't present. So those are the notes for the conversation. I think we have others here who'll be able to share more about the project.
Okay, great. Thank you. We have a number of people who've signed up to speak. So I'm going to, I'm going to mention three names at a time, so please be prepared to, to, to speak. I'll give you each a couple of minutes. If you could try to limit your comments within that period of time. Start out with Janelle Patrice, followed by Kathleen Langen, followed by Shelley Maloney. Is Janelle there? Janelle? I see Janelle's.
Yes.
Same person?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. I am here to share the presentation on behalf of Matt Hunt and Kathleen Langen, who will be speaking.
Okay, go ahead.
I just need to be given rights to share the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, just as a matter of procedure, this was a communication from board to the commission. And I don't know that it's not scheduled for a presentation today. If we want to do that at a later time, we'll need to advertise it as such. But this was just a communication from the Education Advisory Board.
See what you're saying?
I can share now if that's okay.
Just a second, please. What is the rest of the commission thing? Shall we?
Well, procedurally, do we allow the public to speak when we have communications to the commission? I'm just getting clarification for myself. We have, if we have in the past, then I'm fine to hear them now.
Typically, we've allowed a board member to explain the communication. I don't know that we've gone beyond that, but for purposes of notice, if we're going to have a presentation and a discussion on the item, it probably should be agendized.
All right, so Janelle, are you part of the Education Advisory Board?
I am not. I'm from the SMART program, the BCBS SMART program.
Is there anyone from the Education Advisory Board who is signed up to speak?
So maybe we can also clarify to those people who are here to listen that I do fully support what patient is asking us to support. I also want to clarify that we, as the city, do not financially support this project. This is funded by Broward County Public Schools and the tax money they raise. So I certainly support the efforts to make sure Stranahan High School is being built in a way that accommodates the needs of the future, as well as Northeast High School. Hopefully, that's getting built soon. And if Mary Furtig's involved in this, I'm sure it's going to happen. So I hope Zoe has her every meeting too. So just in case people wanted to know how I feel, that's how I feel, and I definitely support it. So maybe we could.
Well, all right, so to chime in on that, you know, I've been hearing over the years about this cafeteria at Stranahan High School. And, and every time I hear about it, the scope of the project gets reduced more and more. And to the point where I feel that, that the people of this community are being short-changed on what they had voted for when they voted for this bond and what we're getting. And whether it's because of the delay or for whatever reason, the costs continue to increase. And, and it's not, it's not helping the situation at all whatsoever. So I, I do support the effort, but I don't support the compromise. The compromise that I see is, is reducing capacity. It's not really improving the facility in a way that was intended. I mean, Stranahan High School is one of the most important schools in our, in our city. It's been there for a very long time. And, and I think that, you know, despite, you know, what we're hearing from the school board, I personally don't accept the compromise that I understand is being proposed. And I don't think anyone in this commission does. Tricia Glassman, you're, you're a former school teacher. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I could go on a long time, but I wanted to just get back to the procedure here because I think people have signed up and people have spoken before.
You want me to, so you want me to have them speak?
I, I really do. I, I, I don't.
All right, we'll give everyone a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think how many people, you know, even if it's 15 minutes, I'm okay.
Okay.
And then hopefully people won't repeat what other people have said, but I'm all in favor of the public comment on, and we have done it in the past.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get through these. All right.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, so Janelle, you back there again?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. I am only sharing the presentation on behalf of the SMART program. So Matthew Hunt and Kathleen Langen from the SMART program will actually be speaking, and I will just be sharing the presentation.
So Kathleen, are you there? Kathleen?
Mayor, yes, I'm here.
Great. So got a couple of minutes. Please tell us your thoughts.
Okay, so we'd like to share a presentation to you. Just a short presentation to describe what's happening at Stranahan with the Stranahan Cafeteria. And I'd like to, in an effort to do that, I'd like to introduce to you Matt Hunt, who is our Director of Construction for the SMART program. And Matt has also been the construction manager for the Stranahan project since it started.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. So yes, my name is Matthew Hunt. Like she said, I have been the project manager on Stranahan since about 2019, the end of 2019. So for the past year, I've been running the SMART program at the school, which includes the renovations to the cafeteria, which is a separate project with a separate architect and a certain firm who's doing that work. So we created this brief presentation for you folks to give you kind of an update on the cafeteria, you know, where we're at, where we came from, where we are right now. So at the cafeteria addition, you can see on this, on the screen, the approved scope for the, for the building, which was, you know, originally, it was a renovation of the cafeteria. The existing campus had a capacity, an interior capacity of only 281 seats, I believe. And so right now, it's Stranahan Cafeteria at the Stranahan High School. The dining area is, you know, was based on an elementary school. And that's what they have on the inside. And then there are some tents that are set up on the outside on a little courtyard for kids to eat. So, you know, through meetings with the board and with the school, there was a plan put together to do an addition for the, for the school. And the approved scope value of that was, you know, close to $7 million, $6,000, $6,675,000, which was all-inclusive of the design and the construction and the management of that, of that project, which would allow us to create interior seating for the capacity of the school. Now, the board presentation that we did for this provided for interior seating, 704 interior seats, 100 exterior seats, and to keep the portable, the senior portable, which is about 80 seats, 86 seats. So what ended up happening was, you know, throughout the course of the, of the design, you know, we're doing estimates on the cost of the work. And basically, we had a roughly a construction value of about $4.5 million to put the addition on, do the renovations to the kitchen, create a new, a new kind of food court-style dining experience for the kids. The original design at 50% was found to be too expensive. We were over budget. So we ended up having to do a negotiation with the architect to redesign, to redesign the, the project, to bring it within, within the FLCC, which is the fixed limit of construction cost that we had for the job, to avoid asking for additional funding for the actual cafeteria itself. So what was done was the footprint of the building was reduced. We reduced the size of the interior capacity for the school down to about 535 interior seats. During a presentation to the community in January of During a presentation to the community in January of this year, we were discussing the current, uh, the current plan as it is. Um, and we're discussing with the community and then it was raised by the community that, well, I don't think that the interior capacity is enough. Um, and what do we actually need for the capacity of Stranahan? So we went back to the RFQ. Uh, we've gone back to the architect and we discussed what the actual request was from the board and the board had asked for interior seating. Uh, the exterior seating was not advisable because they were eating outside now. They wanted it to be a comfortable environment for this, for the students inside. Um, so the, so our goal was to accommodate for 790 interior seats for Stranahan High School. And so this was the original design and then going to head to the next slide real quick. Janelle, this is the plan now. The plan is to expand on three sides to provide for an interior seating capacity of 790 interior seats. Which would make it the largest cafeteria in the district right now. Um, so it'd be the largest interior space throughout Broward County for interior capacity for seating of, of students using the current codes for life safety plan.
Matthew, what's the school population?
School population is roughly, is ju- is just over, I think, 1,500 kids right now.
So you'd have to have lunch in two, in two sessions?
They exist, they exist, you have a two lunch sessions, correct? Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. Um, that's okay. These, you know, these are the questions that I expected to get. Um, so that is, this, so this is the plan. Moving forward. So right now we have a PSA MM, which is a professional services agreement amendment to the architect's contract to. Increase the size of the dining space to allow for 790 interior seats. And that board item is going to the May 18th board meeting, um, to be discussed with the board members. So that is where we are right now. Um, we're a brief, again, very brief history of where we were and where we're going to and where we come from. Uh, and then just the plan that we have right now moving forward.
Okay, so, all right. So that's the school board's proposal at this point, correct?
Yes, sir. That is what, that is what we have been directed to proceed with, which is.
What's your, what's your schedule? What is your time schedule for completion?
So we have, right now, the board approval date is scheduled for May 18th. And the architect would take 60 days to redesign the building to accommodate the 790 interior seats. And then we would go back into the building department with the revised plans to. Get an LOR or letter of recommendation, which will allow us to bid, award and start the project. You know, with the redesign, you know, I would expect that we would be trying to establish a GMP. You know, we'd establish an LOR towards the end of Q4 of this year. And then we'd be trying to break ground on it anywhere between Q2 and Q3 of 22, just because we are going to have to increase the size again.
Okay. Um, all right. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Shelley Maloney, followed by, uh, Natalie Lynch Walsh, followed by Phil Cofold. Are those folks online? Shelley, are you there?
Mayor, I'm here. I was not intending to speak. I'm in a, a director of pre-construction in the Office of Capital Programs at, with the district. And I was just being, um, present just to, to listen in on the conversation after Kathleen and, and Matthew gave their update.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Natalie Lynch Walsh there? Yes, you are.
It's Natalie Lynch Walsh and yes, I am here.
Okay, sorry. I, I was just pronouncing it phonetically.
That's okay. It's the French spelling. It throws everyone off.
Ah, Natalie. Okay.
There you go.
All right, got two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, I did submit both my letter that I wrote to the city commission as well as the preliminary analysis that Zoe Saunders mentioned earlier from the district. Uh, so where I'm going to take you is the complete opposite of what you just heard. You basically take everything you just heard and toss it out the window. Because in, back in 2005, as Zoe mentioned, there was a Castaldi report. The project, the replacement of Stranahan was memorialized in 2010. In 2014, the memorialized list had to go through the, uh, needs assessment process along with everything else. And as a result, only the most basic of repairs were slated for GOB funding on schools with the most critical needs. Unfortunately, best practices dictate that when you do a needs assessment, it includes long-term facility planning that includes comprehensive analysis of need. Which is the facility's condition and educational adequacy, demographic, demographic trends and programmatic needs and involvement by community stakeholders. None of that happened. And then what's supposed to happen is whatever the need identified need is, that drives the funding required. So instead. The superintendent with board approval took 800 million, which was about $50 per household. And crammed all of these projects to fit this $800 million bond amount. So the most egregious examples of what has happened are the cafeteria at Stranahan as well as the art building, but we'll focus on the cafeteria for today. So the deficiencies identified, which are, uh, understated were 1.9 million. The bond funded only 1.2 million. The scope, the architect's scope validation report failed to take a comprehensive approach to the dining capacity shortfall. And only rec- said, recommend the dining capacity and design be addressed under separate food service study scope. No current budget exists for this line item. So that began the fight to get a cafeteria. So when they did approve the cafeteria, it was as a renovation, not a replacement, but that was not clear. And if it was going to be a renovation, you would expect it to fit the Florida Department of Education Castaldi definition, which is extensive renovation and remodeling work. That brings buildings up to today's educational safety and handicap accessibility standards. Not just slap a roof on, slap some windows in maybe, and life safety and an HVAC. That's not what, uh, renovation is supposed to be. So currently, the new program manager, AECOM, which Kathleen Langen is the program director for, they are contractually obligated. To bring before the school board for approval, projects where buildings are deemed to be more economical to replace rather than renovate. This was a safeguard built actually by Shelley Maloney into the current contract, but missing from the HIRI contract.
But wait, Natalie, Natalie, first of all, your time is up, but number, number, number two. That's what the proposal is, is to replace, not to renovate, correct?
That is not what the district's proposal is. Um, the alternate proposal, which is what should be happening is to replace.
So what was the architectural plan we just saw?
That's renovate. They have no intention of replacing it.
It's renovate. It's renovate. The community, myself, others would like, replace.
Place, okay. And, 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 and has a, has an, uh, have designs and estimates been, uh, been created to, to, to replace?
Replace. A best, a basic estimate is twice what the renovation cost would be at about 20 to 21.2 million. We've asked right now at this week's facilities task force meeting, I'm the chair and we'll be meeting on Thursday. We've requested from staff that they evaluate existing utilities and determine the best location for the replacement cafeteria, whether it's in the same location. Or in another location, but that's going to be decided by utilities and the overall aesthetics and logistics.
Okay.
So that's sort of the next step is evaluating that. But the only thing that staff is allowed to do. Because of the directive from the superintendent and Frank Girardi, even though AECOM is contractually obligated to be able to bring it to the board if it's in the best interest. Long-term and most economical to replace, they are being prevented from doing that. Um, so.
Right.
That's sort of where things stand. So we kind of need your help and all the help we can get to move this forward to replacement.
Very good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Uh, Phil, uh, Cofold, followed by Estelle Brennan, followed by Mary Furtig. Is this, is Phil there?
Hi, this is Phil Cofold. I'm director of construction for Broward Schools. Um, I was here similar to Shelley, just to listen and provide input as needed. I do not have a, you know, prepared speech at this time.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Phil. Is, um, Ms. Brennan here? She's. Why don't you come on up in person, give you a couple of minutes? Did you hurt yourself?
Yeah. I'm here someday.
Did she sign a waiver before she walked in?
They're aware.
Please proceed.
Okay. Uh, my name is Estelle Brennan. I am the president of the Riverside Park, Riverside Park Residents Association. Um, Natalie went through a lot of the specifics and details of some of the history and I believe Mary Furtig's going to go into some of that probably later. Um, so I'm going to just kind of give you the community's, um, background in this. Uh, I've been attending the in-person facilities update meetings. Which, uh, needless to say have been, um, interesting and like pulling teeth. Uh, in the beginning, they were scheduled at really off times that made it really hard for members of the community to attend. Um, eventually they accommodated. We started having bimonthly meetings. Uh, the presentations were often given in a format that was. Really hard to understand in that there were six phases of a project, but it was being presented as saying 90% complete. But people, it was hard to understand that it was 90% completion of maybe a phase two of a project. So there were a lot of people that might have been, um, misled. As to, um, the status of the project until we started getting more and more into it. The last in-person meeting I attended was February of 2020. And, um, I, I will say that there's not one meeting in the years that I've been going to these, that the cafeteria was not brought to their attention and why we weren't getting replacement. So to say that costs are just accumulating now is, um, a little interesting considering myself and, and, um, representing the community. And, um, parents and other advocates that would attend these meetings, there was not a meeting that went by that these questions weren't asked. The last meeting that I was at in February, we got into a lengthy discussion about replacement, um, of, um, costs versus renovation. And I was, um, told they didn't have that information. COVID happened. A meeting happened in January. To say that the community and was blindsided by the fact that the plans, uh, presented were being reduced is an understatement. Uh, nobody knew about this. We have no idea who gave that directive. Am I, sorry, am I over? I.
You can finish what you had.
Okay, um, uh, to sum that, that portion up, I'll just say that not only were we blindsided, that was getting taken away. On the February call, superintendent was on, um, the call in the beginning and proceeded to call the reduction a, a bump in the road. Um, uh, making the reduction of the cafeteria. And that being said. We had that, um, situation in January and here we are again where we were not told that there was not going to be an April facilities meeting. There were open-ended questions. We wanted specific breakdowns of those, um, $20 million numbers to see what actually is going into each of those because they're kind of lumped. And there's a lot of factors and questions that we asked that we wanted answers on, on that breakdown. So we could consume the information. Community didn't, community did not approve the, um, proposal that they're bringing forward to the school board. Uh, I had to go through various, uh, venues to try and find out if we were even having a meeting because it was not widely publicized that it was going to be canceled.
All right, great. Thank you. Mary Furtig? Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this matter? I don't have anyone else who signed up. Mary? Good afternoon. What happened to you?
Okay, good afternoon. Uh, before you today is the communication from the education advisory board. I'm going to go through a little bit of history. In 2003, the school board planned to adopt a long-term facilities master plan that failed to fully consider the future needs. Of Stranahan High School and other Fort Lauderdale schools. After the community photo documented the plight of the schools, primarily Stranahan High School. The entire Fort Lauderdale City Commission went to the school board meeting to oppose adopting any plan that failed to adequately address our schools. The plan died. Under the leadership of school board members Ben Williams, Maureen Denon and others. The school board, uh, the school Stranahan was evaluated for replacement. I have the 151-page Castaldi report. Here marked with those recommendations in 2005 that the school primarily be replaced. Um, in fact, this report stated, as you've been told, that the cafeteria would be 100% obsolete in 2018. In 2005, it was 79%. Just so you get a clue here of what you're fixing. Plans were drawn for a new school. A contractor was selected and then a contractor was selected. A local contractor was selected. And then the recession came. For years, in anticipation of building a new school, maintenance was deferred. In 2014, community members, including myself, begged the district to include more in the bond for Stranahan High School and other local schools. We repeatedly disputed the needs assessments and the estimates. The school moved ahead, the school board moved ahead, promising we would see results quickly. In 2015, in the summer, we went to the school board to share the worsening conditions. Again, we took pictures. The Sun Sentinel picked it up. They did several exposes. During that time, former students, faculty and community members testified at school board and budget hearings. We asked for a new cafeteria, among other things. Commissioner Romney Rogers, a Stranahan graduate, attended those hearings with us and the commission. Supported us with a resolution, I believe. They updated, um, Mr. Herbst updated the figures to show our longstanding position as a donor commu- uh, community. One thing we did get, we got a replacement for the outdoor dining tent. In 2018, the school board finally increased the budget for the cafeteria, including much-needed restrooms. It's an integral part of this project because they serviced that part of the school. They cut the budget, um, that was actually proposed to take out an outdoor pavilion, which by the way, is being built in many other high schools. So several months ago, the project manager mentioned that the scope of the cafeteria project was being reduced. Due to increased costs, the staff did not even go to the school board to make this decision. This is when I found out, looking at their pictures, that the addition was building, being built on top of the existing outdoor covered outdoor dining area. So they're not going to put a pavilion in and they're covering the outdoor dining area. They're going to have some seating, but I noticed they didn't say how much. This is wrong. We need to take steps. We need to encourage the school board to do the right thing, which is to build a new cafeteria. That's one of the largest sites. I think it is the largest site school board owns. And it was donated by Ivy Stranahan, as was every high school. All of our traditional high schools were donated by the Stranahan family. We've been a donor city for as long as I can remember. That cafeteria is a small part of what was promised to that community in 2005, when they were told they would get a whole new school. We need to see some of the tax money that's generated from our community. You know, it was one thing to send the money west when they could, they could prove the need out west. But when we can prove the need in this community, we should be able to spend those dollars in this community. In 2009, uh, 15, when we went that summer, they told me a new cafeteria would be $9 million. In 2014, I have these sheets with me in case anybody wants to dispute it. They passed out a sheet that said. That the adopted needs assessments of the cafeteria would cost $2,654,969 to replace. Today, they're telling you 20 million. It's time to do the right thing. This is the can-do commission. I ask you to do what other commissions have done. Only you can do it and stand up and get that cafeteria.
Thank you, Mary. Again, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Alrighty, we'll continue. Thank you and we'll, uh, continue to monitor the situation.
Mayor?
Yep. Who's that? Oh, Ben. Yes, hi, Ben.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. So Stranahan's in my district, Mayor. Um, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about it.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, thanks. Um, so this is something I've been, been working on for a bit and, um. Uh, I share the concerns that have been raised by the public. Now, a little additional kind of history is that. AECOM has not always been the kind of project manager mayor on this. There were, there were other different project managers and. I think historically there have just been some real failings in communication and promises and competence. Um, of some of the other project managers that were part of this. Um, so, uh, now we're, uh, facing a very difficult. Position and part of it, Mayor, is that yes, there are 1,500 students, around 1,500 students at Stranahan. However, Stranahan has the capacity, has the capacity for upwards of 2,000 to 2,300 students. So Stranahan is very much, uh, under enrolled, Mayor. So, um. While 790 seats may sound like a lot for a cafeteria and, and might sound, hey, that's, that's kind of appropriate for a 1,500 person student body. Uh, it is not planning for the future. And so Mayor, as we look at our, the growth of our city and the exciting growth we're seeing in terms of attracting. Uh, employers here and, and folks of all ages to live, work and play on vacation here. Um, Stranahan will continue to grow. I'm confident of it. It has amazing, um, staff. Amazing teachers, fantastic principal, athletic director, state-winning champion athletic programs. Just a phenomenal font on the school, magnet school. Um, so we need to build to the future, Mayor, and. The, with a capacity of 2,000 to 2,300. And the, with a capacity of 2,000 to 2,300 students, which it has, mayor, we've got to have a cafeteria that it could actually house the students as Stranahan moves towards growth in its capacity. Being a former high school student and more importantly, a high school teacher that I have been here in Florida, it's very difficult to have three lunch hours. It is very difficult from a timing standpoint, from a keeping students nourished standpoint. So if it was capped at 790 students and you had growth in the population, you'd have to have three lunch periods, which is very difficult from a staffing, security, and, and student health perspective. So that's the reason why, that's one of the main reasons, I think, why we need a replacement rather than a renovation here to, to provide for the future of Stranahan for years down the road. Now, mayor, this isn't, in my view, this isn't a knock on, on ACOM for me. This is a, a message to the school board of Broward County that I think we should be sending to say, "School board, here's what we as a city and, and our community stakeholders feel is appropriate. We would like replacement and a significant replacement to allow for future growth of Stranahan." So, mayor, I'd love to see some type of communication from the commission to the school board.
Okay, so, Chris, taking this issue from this point, what would be the next step if we, you know, follow through on what Commissioner Sorenson just said to send a message to the school board? Have we already sent messages, though, to the school board?
Well, I think the school board is aware of our position, and I know there's a member of the school board that's dialed into the meeting now as well. We could certainly publish a resolution at the next meeting if the commission wants to take a position that we could then transmit by one way of a...
So is there a consensus amongst the commission to seek a replacement?
Is our next meeting the 18th, and they're discussing this on the 18th, though? So maybe we need to do something sooner.
Yep. I think it'd be, it'd be helpful, mayor, if we can maybe have a walk-on tonight, if possible.
Well, why don't you, why don't you work with, why don't you work with, with, with the, with Mr. Boalow and with the city manager during our break between the meetings to help craft that resolution? We shouldn't have a long meeting today, so hopefully we'll be able to give you enough time to be able to work on that.
Yep. We can do it that way, or we could even, I'm sitting here conferring sort of on the fly with the city attorney. We could even just bring a motion tonight to the meeting that you all direct me to notify the school board, what you want me to tell them.
Well, I don't know what we want. It has, I'd like to see something in writing. So if, I think the, I think Commissioner Sorenson sort of captured the feeling here. Would you, I mean, is everyone in agreement with what Commissioner Sorenson said?
Yes, very much.
Commissioner McKenzie, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
What are your thoughts about this? Are you, are you?
Let me say this, mayor. I think it goes back to Vice Mayor Maritza, she talked about procedure. Those communications, I know we just had a bunch of folks in the community talking about it. If I recollect, as you just referenced, I think we, we did this before in reference to this same issue. I've been sat on some of the, the community meetings at Stranahan before and, and during this commission. Have witnessed some of the debacles, but it, it bothers me when we do resolutions again. A, procedure, I don't, I don't know if we're doing this right. B, what, what do we really get out of? I think once before at a conference, we had a school board member, the superintendent come over, and we kind of like took our gloves off, and we, and we just talked about some things. I think that's the most effective route we ever, we ever had, in my opinion. So I would like to see something more than a resolution, like maybe one of us show up at that microphone that night and do what the, what our residents did to us today. And speak directly to our, our emotions, speak to the issue that's on the agenda, and maybe that might be more effective than sending a piece of paper over there with our names on it.
Unfortunately, Commissioner, we're limited in doing that because it's the same day as our next commission meeting. So I'm, I'm going to try to do that, Commissioner McKenzie. I agree, it's a good idea, but I, I think we're going to be limited.
I think it's more important for you to be there than be with us. I mean, if this item that you have on our commission that is going to create an issue in your absence, we just do not hear that at that time, or we wait for you to get back, like we've done in the past. We adjusted for, for that commission. But I think standing there, being there, means more than a piece of paper.
Yeah, I think they're both, they're both good. Yeah.
I think that your, your appearing or someone from our, from our staff appearing makes a lot of sense. But I think you have in your quiver a resolution backed by the entire commission. I think you speak with greater authority than if you just show up on your own. So that's why I, I would recommend that we do go forward and try to promulgate a resolution. Try to vote on it tonight so that whoever does go there has that to, to show the backing of the commission and the position that we are taking as a city.
Great.
What, what time is the school?
I think it's about 10:30.
So maybe you can, yeah, you can do both. Maybe they can have this time that can work for your schedule, too. Or maybe it's on Zoom, Ben, and you could just, you know, attend, jump off this, shoot yourself for a minute.
Yep.
Yeah, or if you want more of us to attend with you, I'd be happy to do it also.
And mayor, he could actually read the resolution when he's there, if he has it. It's, I think it's very strong to add to his comments, actually just read our resolution.
Yeah, and also, mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are you finished, Steve? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
I know we talk about Stranahan, right?
Yes.
But it's $800 million worth of work for schools throughout this, this, this county. And there's more than one school in our city that's being impacted by this. So I think when we, when we, when we talk about it, we talk about, you know, the benchmark of where is all this money that was earmarked for our city schools?
I would also like to add Northeast High School. It's, it's in the city of Oakland Park, but my neighbors are zoned for that school.
Well, why don't, I think we just need to target this right now.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe what, what Commissioner McKenzie is saying warrants a larger conversation. But right now, I think we just need to focus on this one thing since it's, since it is currently at issue. So why don't we just move forward with that, and then we'll take on the larger conversation? Because I think it does deserve more attention by this commission.
And mayor, just if I can make one other comment, school board member Sarah Leonardi has been amazing just partnering with us and the community on this and fighting for this. And so I've been in constant communication with her about this. I'm texting her right now about when I could speak, and it probably won't be till the afternoon on the 18th, but, but I'll, I'll make every effort to be there, mayor. So, and I'll work on the resolution, maybe with some help from some of the community members there in person. Maybe Mary and Estelle can, can give me some feedback, too, as we draft this.
All right, very good.
Mr. Mayor, for, for purposes of drafting, can we get a little clarity as to what you'd like in the resolution? Because we'll get started on that if it's going to be a walk-on this evening.
I think I would, I would defer to Commissioner Sorenson, who seems to have his ear to the ground here. Let him communicate during the meeting right now, some of the, is that okay with you, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start working on it, mayor, and then I'll, I'll get to Alan some, some ideas.
Okay, thank you. All right, business one, parental leave discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over initially to HR for the presentation. We'll have, Tarlisha come introduce it, I believe, a member of her team and her, the ones that are going to be making the presentation.
Okay.
We're doing the COVID shuffle here in the back of the room.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioner, and vice mayor, everyone present. Tarlisha Smith, Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director for the city. And I have with me my Labor Relations Manager, Janine Richard, Richard, who will discuss the parental...
Is this French or is this English?
Both. Depends on the audience, mayor. Basically, this item was brought forward as an item under Commissioner Glassman's concern regarding action that had been taken by Broward County in expanding the scope of parental leave. And we were looking at the policies that we had here in the city as well as Broward County, and we didn't, did some benchmarking. Also, and there were some questions brought up from Commissioner Glassman on yesterday regarding Gainesville. So I will let Janine move forward with the report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of the commission. As Tarlisha says, I'm Janine Richard, Employee Relations Manager. So what we wanted to, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
What we wanted to present was just a synopsis of all the different counties and cities that do have a paid parental leave policy. We limited our scope to South Florida, but we did, at the suggestion of Commissioner Glassman, look in the city of Gainesville as well. And they do have their own 12-week paid parental leave policy.
Okay, so the backups tells us all the different ones.
Yes, it does.
So it, so Broward County extended it to 240 hours.
That is correct.
What does that equate to a number of work?
Six weeks.
How much?
Six weeks.
Six weeks. So the city of, so the Broward County gives six weeks of paid parental leave for the purpose of there being a newborn, newborn child, adopted or foster child.
Correct.
Okay. It does not relate to, say, someone's sick in the family, a parent needs to stay home for a child. Is that covered under these circumstances?
It's really just for baby bonding. So if you have a birth of a new child or you adopt a new child, and you need that crucial six weeks to bond with the baby.
Okay. And, and, and what has been our, what is our current policy?
Well, currently, we just follow federal law with regard to FMLA, which allows...
So that would be 12 weeks of unpaid?
Up to 12 weeks of unpaid. That is correct.
Baby bonding or anything?
Yes, it could be baby bonding. It could be the care for the mother or the care for a sick child.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any thoughts they'd like to share on, Mr. Maritza, Vice Mayor, sorry?
Do we have a program in place where you're allowed to give somebody else your sick leave, and then you could use that sick leave for other issues also?
In the collective bargaining agreements, we do allow employees to donate sick leave to other employees who have exhausted their leaves if certain criteria is met. Typically, baby bonding may not satisfy that criteria, but if you have an illness, if the child is ill or if the mother unfortunately is ill, then there is a benefit available for donations.
Okay, so you can't use it for the baby bonding? So there's no accumulating additional paid leave through other ways at this point?
Correct.
For the baby bonding?
Any other thoughts from the commission?
Yep, mayor.
Go ahead. Yes, Ben.
Sure. I, I think we have to improve our policy. I think it's vital that we support parents as they're entering into this incredibly challenging and wonderful time of, of child rearing. And I think offering paid parental leave is, is an important part of that. And I think it should be also offered regardless of gender, mayor, and, and to same-sex couples as well. So I think, I think we really should look at this, and, and I think the question is kind of how long? So how many weeks would paid leave be offered? But I think we need to offer paid leave and just need to look at the number of weeks.
Okay.
Mayor?
Who's that? Who said mayor?
Tarlisha, yes, just to address Commissioner Sorenson. Yes, we currently do it without regard to gender, especially based on federal law. At the time that we looked at this, we just wanted to make sure that we were doing in compliance with our current collective bargaining agreements, which we are kind of, and federal law, and basically that's what we follow. If we expand the scope, there's a cost associated with that, and we can provide a cost-benefit analysis just so the city has a snapshot idea of what we spent in the recent past. But if we want that information now, we can share it with you later, just to give an idea because there is a fiscal impact. Yes, we do have some of it right now from 2020.
So, so if we had a six-week paid family leave program here, you're telling us you have the numbers of what that would have cost us had we implemented it in 2020?
Yes, we have it for 2020. We have the backup for the total number of employees. Resource impact, using the average salary of 59 employees who in fiscal year 2020 used FMLA to bond or care for a child, the estimated cost to the city for four, six, and eight weeks, 12 weeks are at 100% is below. So four weeks, 274,966. Six weeks, 412,449. Eight weeks, 549,932. Twelve weeks, 824,898. That's for general fund, and we have it broken down a little bit further. So just...
About a half a billion dollars, about a half a billion dollars would have cost the city if we allowed eight weeks of paid parental leave.
Eee, for eight weeks?
Yes, 549.
Yes. And total for all of the funds was basically just shy of $1 million, 973,379.
And what was that for?
For the full 12 weeks.
12 weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone on the commission have any thoughts about this?
I do, mayor. And, and I agree with what Commissioner Sorenson just said. I think this is the direction we should move. I actually would like to see us, you know, many cities around the country are actually taking this a step further with regards to paid family leave so that it's really not even just child bonding, and I'm sure you're aware of that. It's really, they, they can earn pay. They take time away to address a serious health, you know, condition, helping, being a caregiver in a family, also obviously including caring for a new child or just even a family member with a serious health condition. And, you know, so I, I think that that is even a next step, but I'm certainly willing to take, you know, baby steps to get there. But I, I would like us to look at that as well, but I, I think that this is the direction we should be going in.
Okay.
What was the county again? The county was six weeks?
Six weeks was 500, no, eight weeks was 500.
But the county had a six-week paid baby bonding program, right? Broward County?
Broward County did six weeks.
At 100%, yes.
And we're talking about 100% also when we're talking about paying.
Well, most of the time that our employees have taken FMLA for baby bonding, it's unpaid leave under federal law.
Correct.
So in Gainesville, what, Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Vice Mayor. What Commissioner Glassman was referring to in Gainesville, they pay 100% of the paid leave for the employees. We currently allow the employees to use leave that they have accumulated already. It's unpaid leave under federal law. Now, moving in the trend that Commissioner Glassman is referencing, cities have moved towards, or municipalities in the past, local governments have started moving towards 100% paid leave. We have not explored that to that extent yet because we need to do the fiscal impact and provide that information to the city manager and the commission.
So maybe a good first step would be to pay for the six weeks, and then they can use some additional leave and also take up to 12 weeks. Maybe they have leave accumulated, or maybe they take some of that unpaid. But they still would get the 12 weeks off to bond with the baby, and six weeks would, could be paid if the commission chooses. And then they could also supplement the rest of the six weeks with whatever leave they've accumulated.
Yes, what I would like to do, if, if I may, bring the information back to Vice Mayor and the commission, is to explore it from the context of our collective bargaining agreements, our current policy and the federal law, to make sure that the commission and the manager have the opportunity to look at it from all vantage points and the fiscal impact. Because it also, if we allow employees to take FMLA in addition to other time, that could impact our operational issues because they are, they will be entitled to the time. So you can literally have an employee who takes 12 weeks off and then come back and take more time off. So we just need to look at it from a global standpoint to make sure that we're covering all bases and also make sure that we're looking at the collective bargaining rights and properly observing all of them. Because right now, we have, you know, different operational issues, especially in the two departments that have been using it most in public safety. And we don't want to have that much of an impact where we are crippling operations or creating challenges with overtime that we haven't anticipated.
And Gainesville is 100%, right, for 12 weeks?
Paid.
Paid for 12 weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any anecdotal even evidence of how that's working out for them in Gainesville?
You checked, oh, you did speak to someone.
Yes, I spoke to the Employee Relations Manager at Gainesville, and since for the last two years, they've spent approximately $700,000 in 100% full paid parental leave. So they adopted their paid parental leave policy maybe two years ago, and since then, that's how much they've spent.
But do we know how many employees that...
No, I don't. And I could just add, just for consideration, in Miami-Dade County, they have a different approach. It's that they have six weeks, but they pay 100% the first two weeks, 75% the next two weeks, and then 50% the final two weeks. So there's a lot of flexibility in what you can do. If you don't want to pay the full 100% for the full six weeks, you can prorate it and do a bunch of different things that may be more budget-friendly.
Does, does, if, if, if the federal government allows for 12 weeks of unpaid leave, if we paid... leave, if we paid for half of that, that doesn't compromise their collective bargaining rights, correct?
Their collective bargaining agreements?
Right.
Well, the our FMLA policy is incorporated into the collective bargaining agreements. And currently, our FMLA policy is you get up to 12 weeks unpaid leave.
I I get that.
But then you can use your sick and vacation.
For half of those weeks, that doesn't compromise them.
No. No, not at all. No.
And we're not, and we're not talking about supplementing the 12 weeks. We're just talking about paying for a portion of the 12 weeks.
Paying a portion, yes. We would have to, like I said, rise our city policy, which says unpaid, but that's something that easily can be.
I understand.
And Mayor, the federal government, actually, they did amend FMLA for federal employees to pay for the 12 weeks, correct?
That is correct, for covered federal employees.
Federal employees.
They print money.
Well, I know, but they they did that. Now, I have a question. We know that there's a proposal now from the president in terms of the American Families Plan to deal with this issue. How would that impact us, if any, going forward if that does actually pass?
Well, I did, I, we can look a little further, but I did a little research. I went on the White House website and details are very few. But under President Biden's plan, caring for a child would be covered under his American Families Plan. But it would really be a partial wage supplement. And what I was able to find on the website is that it would guarantee up to 12 weeks in year 10 of the plan. So it wouldn't be something that would be done right away. But and again, details are sketchy because he just announced it not even two weeks ago. But there is conversation at the federal level of not having it just be for federal employees.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris. Yes, who's talking?
Oh, thanks, it's Ben. I was just going to suggest, I think six weeks makes a lot of sense as a starting point for this, for this, you know, upcoming year. And then we can evaluate and, you know, pending Tarleisha's, you know, further investigation.
Chris, how 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 are we, how are we doing for money? Dad.
So we always have more projects and more ideas than we have money in the bank. And, you know, we'll be bringing a balanced budget to you if this is the direction that the commission wants to go. You know, we'll add this into the hopper of things that need to enjoy funding in in future fiscal years. I think it would take between now and October the first for us to really understand exactly what contracts needed to be modified, what policies needed to be changed. So if you want to move forward with that, October one, to have it coincide with October one seems to be reasonable. But you're right, it'll come at the expense of a half million dollars that could be spent somewhere else. So that's, that's the reality of it.
I noticed that men use the FMLA, right, twice as much as women. I just noticed that.
Last year.
Is that because of bonding issues or is that just?
It's probably just taking care of the babies.
Well.
Somebody has to do it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just noticing.
There are two people involved in this.
Anyway, okay, so the the, so one suggestion is to start with the six weeks. 112,000, what is the consensus? What is, what is the rest of it?
Six weeks.
Six weeks. Commissioner McKenzie, you have any thoughts on this?
I would go with six weeks if if I had to do it, yes.
Okay.
I think it's a good start, Mayor. I would like to see though more information as we go forward. Because as I said, I I I do like up to the 12 weeks. But I also want us to look at the concept of just paid family leave in general, not necessarily simply for baby bonding.
Yeah, but.
But that's, but we need to get information.
Expand it.
But we need to get obviously a lot of information.
Can we, can we, can I get a clarification on something?
Go ahead.
Both, I think the mayor and and Tarleisha alluded to this. And it was about if we did the full 12 weeks. I think I need more information to really, you know, talk about this. But if we, if we're doing 12 weeks now unpaid, so that means it meets all of our criteria, whether it's federal, local, bargain agreements and everything. I think the only thing missing is the pay. We just got a snapshot of of three different examples. So this is the direction we wish to go in. I think, you know, I don't think 12 is going to hurt. I think what Tarleisha was alluding to is that maybe in, I think she said the public works, some folks use that to, to take time off. And they experienced a shortage in resources during those times. I don't know how they all plan to be pregnant or bonding with a baby at the same time. But I mean, if we're going to do it, and we've seen examples around the state where 12 is the number. I wouldn't mind doing the 12, but it seems like they're saying we don't have all the information. But to me, we do have it. If we have a bargaining agreement.
Commissioner, I guess.
Six weeks, I got four, I got, I got four kids. Six weeks is not enough. Well, I was fortunate enough that I own my own business and I could take, you know, take the time I needed to do it. I wasn't depending on the government to do it. But here we have, you know, a city with some almost 3,000 people. I just don't think six weeks is enough bonding time with your child. If we're going to do it, let's do it, let's do it right if we're going to do it.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Because of the fiscal impact and understanding operationally how it impacts, based on the the current usage and the past usage, just based on last year, I would ask or propose if we could come back with maybe a presentation showing the sliding scale as well as what you're requesting and the cost benefit, cost benefit analysis associated with it. So you can see the impact because this doesn't take into consideration the other operational issues that we have. And I I just want to make sure before we take that big leap that we may maybe want to look at a phased approach because we're also looking at quite a bit of attrition over the next couple of years with our public safety and other departments of our current workforce.
Let's not take too much time because this is.
Okay.
Like to incorporate it in the next budget.
We can come right back.
Yeah, but Mayor, again, I still think, I still think we're dealing with two different issues. Operations is one thing, that's management. We're talking about giving employees paid time for bonding for a newborn or adoption. So operations is something we manage. So I think I have enough information here today, but based on what I want to say. But I don't want to say that because we can't manage. We can't do this.
Well, I think the other members of the commission wanted the full, wanted a fuller report to see what the impact would be both financially and operationally.
Yes.
Or they need a decision.
To Commissioner McKenzie's point, I just want to make sure that he understands that we're clear that any employee who applies for it, we can't deny it, they're going to get it. It's just a matter of whether or not it's going to be fully paid 100% based on what the commission is proposing now or whether they use their own time. And we can just look.
I'm crystal, crystal clear, crystal clear, I get it.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, I just have one other question for Tarleisha.
Sure.
Tarleisha, and I think you already answered this, so forgive me. But if the city of Fort Lauderdale offered six weeks of paid, does that, can that run consecutive with a 12 weeks federal? Or does that have to run concurrent?
Yes, depending on how the commission proposes, we move forward. So I just want to make sure that we're giving you all the information that you need in order to be able to do that. And the numbers that we gave you today was based on 59 employees. Okay, so that is the usage rate for 59 employees only that used it in 2020. So the numbers would be much greater. I mean, we have a, we look at the age of our population and childbearing and those different things. But I just want to make sure that when we bring the information forward, you have enough information to make an informed decision and not just based on the snapshot that we gave. We just brought that forward as an example. So that was based on 59 employees. We have upwards of 3,000 employees. So I just want to make sure that we're clear when we're sharing that information.
Yep, great, thank you, Tarleisha.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Tarleisha, do you have any information of the private, any private businesses? Do we have any examples of private companies giving paid baby bonding time?
No, we didn't benchmark, but it's a very different scenario when you look at the private sector.
I was just curious.
Yes, I, if you'd like us to be part of the presentation, when we come back, I can bring it.
There is a, you know, Vice Mayor, just to mention, I I did, and I'll share this with you on the break. I'll, I'll leave this packet for you. But I did look at information from the nationalpartnership.org. There is a lot of information about how the private sector is really benefiting when they do offer these benefits versus the companies that are not offering this. It's, it's interesting, but there's a lot of statistics. So again, it's called the National Partnership for Women and Families. Some interesting reading, and they also get into a lot more in terms of paid family leave for all of the other reasons that I had mentioned before besides that they'd be bonding. So National Partnership for Women and Families.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and I know, I know many huge multinational finance, financial services firms, private side, that offer significant paid parental leave to their employees. And they take them up on it and it's really, really positive from what I've heard. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all that work.
Business two, Neighbor Volunteer Office Program Update 2021. Who will be making that presentation?
George is going to be making the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and Neighbors. Thank you very much for having us here. My name is George, George Oshka. It's not French in this case. I would like to thank Commissioner Bern Sorensen to invite us for making the presentation here. And I brought actually some of my family along too. So come on up. Okay. I just would like to give an overview of the office. It has been established in April 1st, 2013, so it's just about eight, eight years old now. I have two primary roles. One is to bring people into the community, into the city to enhance our services, but also go out in the community and create partnerships around issues that we normally don't deal with. It's a neighborhood empowerment, homeless issues and all kinds of other things that make a difference in the community, but not strategically part of what normally a city service would be. Our goal is okay to address the neighbor, neighbor goals and also the city's goal. So this is my Bible, this is Vision 2035. I go by that quite a bit, kind of see, okay, what can we do through impact volunteering? Now, one of the things that always gets me a lot of trouble is three words, what's your passion? A lot of people come into my office and I'm trying to figure out, okay, what is it that you're passionate about? Okay, that can make a difference in the community? So each one of these people that you see is passionate about something, you are passionate about something. Most of the people here are passionate about something. And all my volunteers are really caring about certain issues that make a difference in the community and they're willing to take on leadership around that. So our core focus areas are right now sustainability and blight remediation, early literacy and youth empowerment and community engagement and empowerment of the youth. What we're doing in regards to sustainability is we have four major service days. We had one just two weeks ago, Fort Lauderdale Cares Day. We have over 300 to 400 people normally come out and do 25 to 30 projects. Collectively, every year it's over 80 projects, just the four different service days. Fort Lauderdale Beach Suite, we do twice a month on the second and fourth Saturday. We generically have about 100 to 250 people coming out, about 2,000 people participate. And we collect about 150,000 cigarette butts and to peddle with the purpose is the shoreline and waterway cleanup. And we also paint the homes of indigent or deserving neighbors that had code violations through the Adopted Neighbor Program. As you can see in red here, we have two of these programs have been nationally acclaimed and award winners. Adopted Neighbor was the number one selected award for the NUSA. Fort Lauderdale Make a Difference Day was a third place winner. Relativity programs, we have been working with Take Stock and Children and the Reading Card Programs over the last eight years. We're also doing a lot of work with bringing in little free libraries in the community. I mean, just the need in our less fortunate neighborhoods is incredible when you see discrepancies of availability of books in a neighborhood. If you look on the east side of town, the three highest performing elementary schools out of the kids there, 86 to 92% read at grade level. If you're going on the other side of the railroad tracks, it's only 20, 22, 24 and 26%. So it's a huge discrepancy about how many kids can read in the end of third grade. And that's huge impact about all quality of life in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And but just bringing out the little libraries into those neighborhoods and providing free books, we're just giving them access to the books. The mentorship programs have to go with it to make a difference. We also did a show up stand up youth leadership program. We had 26 youth doing community service projects that were high impact and really connected with about 700 people. And it taught them about accountability, respect, and really to build their self-esteem at the end of the day. And it was just incredible to be part of those programs. One of the greatest one that we did was the peace march. Christian Jones was the young gentleman who was actually a juvenile delinquent in our community and arrested multiple times when he was 12, 13 years old. But he went out and did a community service project where he had to engage Mrs. Elijah, had to talk to the Parks and Rec Department, the police department and organize a peace march. And every time he had a roadblock, we were able to help him around the roadblock and get him to where needed to go to actually have the march. So fast forward, Commissioner Roberts, Romney Roberts kind of came along with us. We had 50 people that walked with him, five police officers. And he had to give a speech and the gentleman had never really spoken beforehand. And when he, we saw him, okay, was very soft spoken. But once he was doing these speeches, he really stood, stood up straight, woke up strongly and made a difference. And instead of going to jail when he was turning 18, he went to college. And those things I would love to see more of. And it's the only way really that we can do it. It's like I'm a one man show, but we created really a family around me, around the issues. And just going to the community engagement, part of what we're doing too is like getting the Club 55 going, engaging the elderly in our community. We had the Riverwalk Ambassador Program. We did the MSD Memorial a few weeks ago. One of the award winners too was the Open Canvas Project where I was sitting down with Michelle in Seattle one time. And she said, George, what can we do with that big old ugly building, our old building department? And we talked about options and she kind of liked the idea of creating art around it. So fast forward, we, within six weeks, we had a leadership team that raised almost $16,000 to buy, pay for supplies, but also give out small stipends to really renowned artists okay that were really in in Wynwood at the same time also. And when it was just absolutely beautiful to see the finished artwork. So we had almost over 80 artists involved, over 400 people participated in painting the building. And it lasted about a good two years. Excuse me. And unfortunately, we have a park now for that. But one thing I'm really proud of the last year was that the community activism didn't stop. Once we shut down and it was, stay at home orders were issued, we still had activists in the community that really want to make a difference and deliver food stuff and supplies, hygiene items to the community that's still homebound the elderly. So over the last year, we almost gave up. Jesus, any water by any chance? Okay. So we have 1,000. Jesus.
Some water.
Something. Choking up. Oh, can you?
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm totally prepared for this one. Passionate, yes, thank you. So we we gave out 1,000 personal comfort packages. We held right now over 54 food donation drives, okay, where we gave out 800 care packages to deserving neighbors okay that experience homelessness. And in order. And also now for the last, God, frog. and also now for the last, God, frog. Over the last six months, okay, we engaged over 200 people in our pop up resource events. And those are really impactful because we're engaging the community to donate goods that we give out to the most distressed and disadvantaged community that we have. It's actually the kids, okay, they're experiencing homelessness in our elementary schools. So each time we do that, we invite about 30 families and we have been able to serve 85 families over the six months. And 181 kids with some necessities. That's not only food items, it's also the hygiene items, clothing, books, cleaning items and things like that. And we have been nominated for the final finalist, okay, for the NUSA award on that one. And so remember when I said, what's your passion besides me choking up? Each one of them that you see is very passionate again. But what we started to do over the last seven years is really create a leadership council. Here's some of my favorite leaders in the community and we have right now 39 people strong. And these are the people that are the backbone to me and without them, nothing would work. So and what I'm really proud of is that we help one another. It's a family. And we have raised tens of thousands of dollars in donations and cash to make things work over the years. And what really is, what I'm really proud of it, that they created three nonprofits themselves. It's a Beach Sweep LLC is one of them. Action for Literacy, another one, and Pedal With A Purpose is a third nonprofit. So Action for Literacy is actually Mark Miller. And he started with three other people, the nonprofit in 2017. And we're really embracing the concept of donating the books through the little free libraries. We have 128 libraries in the communities right now. Most of them on the west side of town as an early literacy intervention program. Over 500 volunteers participated to decorate, build them and put them into the community. We did distribute, distributed over 35,000 books, 335, sorry, 35,000 books every year and raised about $25,000, okay, to support these initiatives. Beach Sweep, okay, it's Barry Levy right behind me. He's the president and they formed Beach Sweep Inc. in 2016. And generically, we have over 150, 200 people supporting us in the beach cleanups. Over 2,000 people helping out and 150,000 cigarette butts were collected annually. And we normally work with other organizations to provide educational programs, artwork and we're doing a lot of smaller beach cleanups. Pedal With A Purpose, actually, for mine, Robert Figueroa stopped by the office, asked him, what are you passionate about? He said, what I'm really passionate about is get a thousand pounds of trash out of our waterways within a year. Well, we took out two kayaks for one afternoon, collected 85 pounds in 45 minutes and that started his action. And now he has Pedal With A Purpose in Fort Lauderdale, Orlando, Tampa, Key West, and is trying to get it into LA too. So it's growing. So it's really fun to see that as a catalyst, we can really get people to take on ownership and take leadership on the issues that are important to them. And collective impact, probably over 25,000 people have been called to service and have really stepped forward. Volunteer contribution averaged about less than 10,000 a year on average, but fiscal year 2019, we're almost at 18,000. So it really made an impact there. And if you put a dollar figure to it from a national average, it's over 2.2 million, but that's only probably the tip of the iceberg. Because what we're really looking at is like the goodwill we created to all the community service projects is like really priceless. And I just invited some of my volunteers, okay, just kind of share why they help out and what's important to them. So Mark, can you start out and Barry?
Hi, I'm Mark Miller. I'm president of Action for Literacy. We're one of the groups that blossomed under George's department started a few years ago. What's the most fun about it is I'm also in the education business, so it wasn't much of a stretch to go to early literacy. But the remarkable things that we see with children who are learning, we have a number of events. Commissioner Sorenson, I recall it was one at one reading to children. It's just remarkable to see what happens. And the more that you do, particularly in certain neighborhoods, the more people that come out. And to be at 125 little libraries today, when not many years ago it was like, where are we going to put one? So it's actually been a very good program. So and thank you for your time today, by the way.
So we've been doing the Fort Lauderdale Beach Sweep for over five years now. The second Saturday every month now we've expanded also to the fourth. We get hundreds of people out there. George just mentioned the cigarette butts and a given Saturday, we get 10,000 cigarette butts that otherwise would just be sitting there leeching into your environment, about 100 pounds each Saturday of trash and another 30 pounds of recycle recyclables. We get all the little pieces that the tractors don't pick up and people love coming out to it. It's a really good community event. We have people, we have corporate events come out, high school football teams come out. And it's a, it's a big positive. People love doing it. And also I want to thank the city for being in support of it and being a partner in the Fort Lauderdale Beach Sweep.
Well, again, okay, this is kind of a sample of what our leadership team is about. And I feel like we really created a great family in the city of Fort Lauderdale that makes a huge difference in all kinds of aspects or can bring in goodwill to the community and that's just priceless. And I thank every one of my leadership team here to be here today and thank you for taking the time to listen to us. If you have any questions, please go ahead.
Let me just start out by saying, you know, I've, I've been on the city commission for a number of years and I've watched, you know, George and all of your team members work in and around our city. And I'm telling you that you are the heart and soul of this community. The people that you draw into these initiatives help make Fort Lauderdale a better place. You make us feel good about being citizens of this community. And, and, and I can't, from the bottom of my heart, I can't thank you enough for all the work that each and every one of you do. And George, you've been a shining example of volunteerism and, and collective enthusiasm that has always, has always made me wonder like, where does this man come from? You know, you're an angel from heaven, all the things that you do for us. So
Thank you.
I just wanted, I know that other members of the commission may want to also speak, but from this seat, I just want you to know that we thank you again and again, all of you for all the work that you do for our community. So thank you. Anyone else want to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for volunteering for our city. I really appreciate it and I know our entire city does. I participate in Pedal With A Purpose myself. I know that was a little bit further out west. I have had some people in my district ask about a waterway cleanup opportunity. I participated with the Marina Industries Association annual event. Also, I believe the city may partner with the Marine Industries Association to do the local waterway cleanup. Is that on the horizon? It's usually about this time of the year.
Yeah, it was just this month, actually March. It's normally the first Saturday of March, but they did it all weekend, every weekend in March, simply because of COVID. And they engaged the boating community and probably 40 to 50 waterway cleanup. It's normally on the east side where you have close to a launch pad or something like that and kayaks would be a secondary thing. Out to your home is probably a bit further west than that would go. But normally it's right in March and we do at times partner up with them, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to add to the kudos again, what Mayor said and what Vice Mayor said. I, I've always been amazed in the thousands of volunteers and I, I actually do hear from volunteers that love volunteering and, and the work that you do and just reading the backup and the full report and, you know, the thousands of people that participate. So I just wanted to echo the mayor's sentiments and thank all of you for the incredible job that you do. It's, it is, it's so vital to what makes our city a community. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McKenzie, do you want to add to this discussion?
Thank you for the volunteerism. I participated in some of the beach cleanup, some of the other things. It's good. It's not about me. It's about what we're doing for our environment and for our city. So thank you all for your efforts.
Great. Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks, thank you, George, you know, and the whole team. What y'all do is it's just part of what makes Fort Lauderdale so special. I am sure that a lot of cities don't have, well, one, I know they don't have a George and two, they definitely don't have programs like this. So it's just really, really, it matters. Thank you. I mean, it's awesome just seeing the, the LLCs, the entities that have formed as a result of this. It's just fantastic leadership and cultivation. And so thank you. And George, keep, just ask, you know, keep, keep paying us, keep sending us communication for when things happen. And George, from a, just how we as commissioners and mayor commissioners can keep supporting or help, is it any, any, I don't know, direction or thoughts or feedback for us as to how we can better support your, what else we can be doing?
Well, I would love to see sometimes, okay, the pulpit is right here when you encourage it from upfront and, and really recognize the people that make a difference. So thank you for doing that and always being there. So right here is a great forum, okay, to promote volunteerism. Sometimes being a one man show is a little tough, but again, okay, I have a great support team, but sometimes I can't ask them certain things that should be done and I need to do it myself. So sometimes a little help would be nice because I'm getting also a little bit older too. And you see me out there, okay, painting and building and
Painting the old one stop shop.
Yeah. You see me all over doing stuff and
And then we demolished it, Mayor.
Yeah.
It wasn't because, it wasn't because of your paint job. Yeah, it wasn't because of your paint job. So don't, don't take it personally. Thank you.
It's just you're doing a great job, okay, to promote volunteerism. So thank you for that.
And George, just All right, great. Thank you.
Barbara, just to speak.
Sorry.
Yes, Ben. One last comment. George, just if you could, you know, sometimes if there's special events happening in our district that you think are worthwhile for us to mention, you know, during our commission reports or just post on social media or so, please encourage, you know, myself or the other commissioners, just sending us the communication and mentioning that because sometimes we, 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 we don't hear everything. So keep that communication up. Thanks, George. Thanks, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Leanne, Barbara, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi.
Hello. Thank you so much for, for allowing me to speak today. I saw this topic in our pre-agenda meeting and I just wanted to make a quick comment. If that's all right?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I really wanted to accentuate the work that George is doing. I think it's really fantastic and I really love the little libraries. We have two in, on my property and they get a lot of use. And the, the only thing I wanted to add while we were talking is the possibility of doing a bit of fundraising to buy books that are appealing to some of our young readers, particularly our Black and Hispanic young readers, because the majority of the books are donated and sometimes, you know, Tom Clancy doesn't really appeal to a young reader, even though it's a great book. And there are lots of really high quality books now by African-American and Hispanic authors that have those characters in it that would appeal. And we were fortunate enough to get a really nice donation from Commissioner Glassman. And we are now in the process of buying books and are going to be reviewed by our youth. But I just want you to be aware of that, 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 you know, having books that really appeal to those young readers is a critical part of making them really excited about reading. And so we're doing, you know, we're doing a little bit here, but I just wanted to kind of spread that, that word to you all.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Is anyone else interested in speaking on this item? Okay, we'll move on to business three, the city's carbon footprint policy recommendation. Who will be speaking to that?
Mr. Mayor, this will be, we'll let Raj introduce Glenn.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Glenn Hedwin is a part of our Public Works cross training program will be making the presentation. And it has the memo, the recommendations have been prepared in conjunction with Nancy Gassman. She'll be available to answer any questions that we are unable to. As Glenn makes the presentation, I just wanted to make one thing. I wanted to mention one thing about this particular program and the recommendations that right now we do not have any funding for it and you will be considering many of these recommendations that are going to have consequences or impact on the budget. And normally my experience has been, I have done this for many years and I know that many of these programs, they start with great fanfare and they are there for two years, three years, four years. And due to lack of funding with the parallel or competing priorities, they kind of fizzle out. So this is just a sort of a, a word from my prior experience, not necessarily it means that it is going to be that way. But we talked about, you know, early on about the, the time off, et cetera, and the impact on the budget. And there are many, many actions that are going to be in this presentation that is going to require commitment on the part of the commission to fund some of these projects or at least get started. So having said that, Glenn, it's all yours. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. I am Glenn Hedwin, still the Sustainability Manager in the Public Works Department. Thank you for taking the time to discuss these policies. As you may recall, in November of 2020, the city commission asked us for an update on the city's progress on addressing its carbon footprint. At that time, we reported a number of actions we've taken that within city operations, we had reduced our green, our greenhouse gas emissions by 20% since 2010. A large part of that was due to FBL making substantial improvements in, in, in investments in cleaner energy and also to a lesser degree reductions on our own energy, electricity usage and reductions in our vehicle fuels usage. Now, following that meeting, the commission requested that we bring back some policies and some other ideas to how do we move forward from there and set a longer term goal. So subsequently to that, we went to the Sustainability Advisory Board and we met with them in January and February and presented the policies that you're going to see today. They sent you this communication, which we've been holding to align with this meeting and expressing their support for those recommendations. And one of the key things to understand with carbon footprint is that what we do with the city is a small part of what we're trying to accomplish, but it really takes an alignment of efforts locally, nationally and globally to lessen the impacts of climate change, which we are already experiencing here in Fort Lauderdale. So as a result of the, the presentation to commission and the commission request and the SAB, I'm going to be talking to you about some recommendations for your consideration on policy for the city of Fort Lauderdale. But before I get to the local level, I wanted to bring your attention to something that happened at the federal level just a few weeks ago. On Earth Day, President Biden made some announcements of federal climate goals. He's, he set goals that include a 50% reduction in carbon footprint nationally by the year 2030. He set a goal of achieving net zero nationally by the year 2050. And if you may not know what net zero is, and when, and a few slides, I'm going to explain that concept because it's key to the recommendations that you'll see before you. He recommended a renewed focus and investment on electrical vehicles, the infrastructure and programs to encourage the purchase of more electrical vehicles. It included a recommendation It included a recommendation to improve the resiliency of our electrical grid. As you know, um, in Texas last year, the vulnerability of their electrical grid was highlighted by the winter storms they experienced. And any net zero future with more renewable energy, more electrical vehicles needs a more resilient electrical grid. And finally, the, the, I want to highlight, he set a goal that at the power sector, our electricity generators should be carbon free by the year 2035. And as I go forward and start talking more at the city level, I wanted to point out that what we're going to be talking about is really in alignment with these, these federal national goals. And the starting point for the goals that we're going to present to you came from our city's own comprehensive plan, Advanced Fort Lauderdale, which was finalized by this city commission late last year. And it includes, um, multiple policies and newish, uh, and a new element related to climate change. The, the, it includes several specific long-term goals for reducing carbon footprint and city operations through actions such as increasing renewable energy usage, reducing fleet emissions, considering the greenhouse gas emissions and decision-making when you're making a new purchase or building a new facility. And there are several related to greenhouse gas emissions in the community, such as reducing emissions from transportation, uh, through encouraging more, more mixed use development where people can live, play and work in the same place. So these policies and measures from the comp plan will service the foundation of the recommended policies I'm going to walk you through now. There are six of them. And the, these are the ones I'm going to be talking about. I'll be going through each one on one or two slides each. And they, uh, the first one is net zero. And, you know, having said that, this is the first most important one, and I'll now offer a definition of that. Net zero means that the amount of carbon or greenhouse gas emissions that you're sending up into the atmosphere equals that that's being removed. Now you remove it by things like planting trees, more green space, but really the focus today is going to be onward, how do we reduce emissions? And there are really two primary things we're going to be talking about. You get cleaner energy sources such as solar panels and you're more efficient with how you use energy. If a more, a hybrid car, you have an LED light bulb. So what we have here is a proposal for consideration of, uh, setting a net zero goal for government operations to do it first, because that that's something more immediately within our control and then have the community achieve it later in 2050. Now there are many cities that are already adopting these kind of policies. The Sierra Club has a program called Ready for 100. And they've signed up many cities across the US to make pledges very similar to the ones I'm presenting to you today. There are nine cities in Florida that have already signed on to this, including Gainesville, Sarasota, Orlando, St. Petersburg, Tallahassee. Another organization I wanted to highlight is Carbon Neutral Cities Alliance. It's a, and it, a global organization international of some of the largest cities, trying to figure out how can these large cities be a carbon neutral city? Finally, I wanted to mention the climate mayors. I know our own Mayor Trent Talis has been a member for several years and there are many cities in that who have set these kind of net zero pledges. So the net zero i- is kind of the foundational policy, would set a long-term goal. Where do we want to go as a city to be able to meet these scientifically, you know, based greenhouse gas emissions to really help us manage the climate change impacts that we're going to be facing over the next, the next decades. So that the following, the next three policies are focused on city operations and saying, what are some of the things we can do in city operations that can move us towards net zero? The first of them is to require sourcing of electricity, 20% of our electricity from renewable energy by 2030. Again, in, we're talking city operations. And this is almost straight out of the comp plan. And there, there are several ways we can do that. We can look at our existing buildings and adding solar panels to them. You would want to time that with roof replacements, because if you put a solar panel on and then next year after replace the roof, that, that would be a lot of extra work. When we build new buildings, we can look at adding solar panels or requiring them on those. And one of the things that we've done in our sustainability group is our sustain, sustainability administrator, Jason Buckenfus, who couldn't be here today. But he did, he looked at our, our buildings and said, what is the capacity we have? What would a ballpark cost? And we found, unfortunately, if we put solar panels on all our roofs, we wouldn't reach that 20%. So we would need to start looking at other things. And that's where looking at things like renewable energy credits comes in and thinking about, um, FPL has a program they've offered in the past and may offer again where you, you invest in, in their large solar fields that they have across the state and you essentially own that and get a credit for that. And now hand in hand with a policy for energy efficient, for renewable energy would be energy efficiency. We would want, as you, this is something we've been doing over the past, um, 10 years. Our energy consumption from 2010 to 2020 dropped approximately 7%. And we are saying here, we want to try to drop it another 10% of the next 10 years. And the more energy efficient we can be in our own buildings, the less solar panels we would need to meet our renewable energy goal. And often, energy efficiency is the most cost effective way to reduce carbon footprint. There are a few examples of some projects we've done. We did an energy performance contract with Honeywell. And we saw significant reductions in energy usage, uh, across multiple city facilities. On the right, we is, are probably our most successful project is, uh, we did some programmable thermostat replacements, including 11 right here in City Hall. We invested $25,000 to replace 11 thermostats. And in, in one year, we've seen savings in excess of $33,000. And the, the, the plan in the middle of building energy efficiency plan is an analysis of looking at more opportunities in other buildings. And we believe there, there's plenty out there. The third leg of looking at city operations is focusing on fleet electrification. Right now, overall, if you look at our fleet, we have about 10% of our fleet is hybrids or electric vehicles. The picture in the lower left is one of our city's all-electric Nissan Leafs. We have four of those and it's parked at a solar charging station, which is located at fleet. So when you drive these, these vehicles that are charged there, that is a net zero vehicle. And so what the policy we're proposing is that we try to increase the low emission, preferably electric vehicles that we have in our fleet. There have been a number of fleets that are making pledges like that. Broward County has set a pledge for zero emission fleet by the year 2030. There, the next two policies focus more on the community. Again, um, at the community scale, approximately 33% of our greenhouse gas emissions are due to transportation. So to have a significant impact in the community, we need to address both transportation and buildings together. Those are the two biggest factors. But in terms of transportation, as you know, um, as you know, congestion, connectedness has been a priority for the city for many years. And there've been, we've been promoting more multimodal transportation, making our, our roads more accessible, more friendly for bikes, for pedestrians. As you move people out of the, out of cars, you can have a sub, substantial impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Finally, to incentivize, um, reductions in community emissions, you can consider policies, programs and ordinances that start looking at more at our built environment and where we develop. So cool roofs and hardscapes can reduce energy usage and the heat island impacts in our community. In some cities, they require white roofs or reflective roof every time you build a new building or renovator roof. It can have a substantial benefit for the building and the community. In some of our neighboring cities, uh, Miami and Miami Beach, they require a green building certification like LEED when you build above a certain threshold. Another opportunity is making buildings ready for solar and electric vehicles. When you have a larger building, there's going to be more people bringing EVs there. So having at least the infrastructure, if not a charging station available and having the, the wiring you may need for solar panels. In addition, um, some of our neighbors in Miami and Orlando have set up programs for, to focus on building energy use in larger buildings through things like a benchmarking program where the larger buildings are either voluntarily or, or required to start reporting their energy usage to get the building owners really thinking about what they're doing and how they can improve. And finally, encouraging more mixed use development through looking at our land use, um, or how we use land and get people so that they can live, work and play in the same areas and reduce their vehicle usage. And there are examples of almost all of these in other Florida municipalities. So finally, to summarize, you know, these are, these are policies and programs that could make us part of that global effort to reduce our carbon footprint and lessen these impacts of climate change. There are some investments in reducing our carbon footprint. But most of them are investments. They can offer payback and reduce energy bills in increasing our resiliency, reducing operational costs. And let me add, when we're talking about energy bills, right now, the city spends approximately $9 million a year in electricity. But our FPL is currently proposing a rate increase, which would increase that to $11 million per year over the next five years. So i- if we can increase efficiency, we can take a chunk out of the nine million in the, the two plus million is going to go up. So with that, brings me to the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Any questions from the commission?
Well, actually, I, I didn't know. And, and by the way, thank you to you and the board for all the work behind this. Um, I was just wondering if we had a chance to, uh, flesh out costs, Chris, or, you know, how, you know, have we really looked at this in terms of, you know?
On a case by case basis, I guess.
If you look into the, the package, there's some ballpark estimates where we started to think about, what does this cost? In exhibit one, there's a column, for each of the policies, there's a column called impact. For example, let's start with the renewable energy, which is trying to get to the right page.
Okay. Well, if you look at page two, for example, which you talked about converting more of our vehicles to hybrids.
Okay.
Electric vehicles. There's a little bit of a breakdown of what
Right, right. We had estimated currently, it's approximately $2,000 to 6,000 per vehicle. Now,
Extra.
Right. And, and incremental costs. So we, we have, um, Drew Newstrom from Fleet here, if we need to go any deeper on these things. But, um, one of the things that's interesting with this is a lot of manufacturers have committed to, um, going to all electric fleets. And so I think over the next decade, we're going to start to see there's more vehicles that have electric or hybrid options. And the prices should decrease, particularly if the federal programs move forward to really push electric vehicles. So in terms of our goal, we had estimated, um, for non-emergency vehicles, we would need, we currently have 142, um, hybrids, primarily hybrids and a few plug-in vehicles. And we had estimated of our fleet for which there are options for, for low emission vehicles that you could get, um, there's about 600 non-emergency vehicles. So to go to 50% wouldn't really just mean doubling that at this point. And there are, with all of these things, renewable energy, electric vehicles, there may be some additional investment, but there is also a certain payback you get from using less gasoline, from less maintenance. So thi- this is meant, these numbers here are meant as some preliminary back of the envelope calculations. If we wanted to look at this more, we might bring in someone to do, do a more extensive analysis of the fleet we have and look at a more vehicle by vehicle basis. But as I said, too, over, if we're looking at a 10-year goal, in five years, the scenario may be very different than it is today and hopefully a much more positive one.
I was just wondering if we were thinking of actually looking at this entire report and figuring out phases? If we were actually to phase in a lot of these recommendations over time or is that the next step with all of this, Chris?
That's what we're going to have to do is look at this and, and give you an implementation strategy.
Right.
Some of these things that we just heard, you know, you probably can get two or three done for the same cost between one of the others. So we'll need to balance what the right, what the right implementation strategy is, and that will happen through our sustainability.
Okay, thank you.
Also, as we continue with our capital program, for example, replacing the water treatment plant. Obviously, we're going to try to do so in a more, uh, energy efficient way. Technologies having, you know, have been invented. So that, so on a case by case basis, we will be able to try to reduce the carbon footprint of the city. So, okay. Any other questions from any member of the commission? Yes, go ahead, Ben. Someone's just photo bombing you.
Yeah, we're, they're feeding the dog things they shouldn't be feeding the dog. Um, sorry, thank you. Could you go back in the presentation to, um, if, if I've heard you right, around building code and, and my, I think you were making the point that Miami Dade, for example, has, yes. Or as well. So I'm, I'm interested in this as well, in addition to the, to the other components you shared. This is just great. And I'd be interested in what are other cities, surrounding cities or counties doing to basically promote greener development and growth? Is that something you could kind of give us a little bit more fidelity on? Not right now, but just in, in the future?
Yes, um, some of the things that other cities are doing are looking at, um, requiring green, uh, LEED certification. I know that, I'm aware of off the top of my head, two cities that have done that. Miami Beach has a requirement, if you are over 7,000 square feet, you're required to get a LEED certification. And if you are in city of Miami, I think it's over 50,000. And I believe there are several more in South Florida, but those are the two off the top of my head. There's almost everything here I can, I have examples of from other cities.
Great. You don't have to give them to me now, but yeah. So it'd be like, cool roofs are just fantastic and I think can be really win wins for the community and folks are moving into those buildings. Sorry, Raj, were you gonna talk?
Yes, Commissioner, I think, uh, uh, our, our DSD, they require all new developments to have many of the features. So they are very consistent and they have been doing this for several years. And if I'm not mistaken, about, uh, three, four years ago, Nancy Gassman had spearheaded some new construction standards that, uh, we are going to be adopting and making a part of our code. So just about a month, month and a half ago, I was checking with our engineers to see to what extent they have incorporated many of those recommendations. So I think we are ready to implement, uh, many of those standards and incorporate in our code. But I think, uh, almost all new development, uh, they, you know, they are required to, to have these features. LEED certification is one of them, but there are many other factors, uh, or many other actions that they do. And coming back to our own facilities, I, I believe that our managers are very sensitive and aware that they need to incorporate many of these, uh, energy saving devices, et cetera. So I think we are on the right track. It's just that, as the manager said, that we need to have some implementation strategies based on, you know, what, how much funding we are going to set aside. Thank you. you know, what, how much funding we are going to set aside, thank you.
Thanks Raj, but I don't, so we have a requirement for solar that's going to be implemented, is that what you're telling me?
No, not currently.
No, yeah, and I don't think that's.
Yeah.
Sir, go ahead, sir.
Yep, there are some green building requirements, but most of the ones on this list go above and beyond what the city currently has.
Right, yeah, so that's what I'm interested in is, great, what are we doing and what will we do in the short term? But then what are opportunities in the longer term? So I'd like to kind of have a better sense of what that might look like, the possibility. So Chris, am I, is that, I don't know the best way to do that, but am I making sense?
I think so, I mean, I think we just have to, this was sort of a initial jump in and now we come back to you all with the phased recommendation on how we proceed from here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Definitely sets the baseline that we can, that we can continue the discussion from.
Yeah, it's great, thank you, Chris, thanks Vice Mayor for mayor.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to us, I just had a couple of questions, I love the multimodal options because I think that's important for getting people out of cars and I know Ben, we're working on this with Lotterie Trail, so hopefully the synergy of both of those will accomplish two of our goals, you know, especially the emissions. How do other cities do it? Like I just got back from Salt Lake City Park City and I saw the wind. What are those things called? The wind, what are they called?
Wind turbines.
Turbine, okay, yes, I saw them, I really wasn't sure what they were because I, we don't have them here. They had solar and they have probably a hundred miles of biking trails, like how do other cities get started with this stuff? Is there a partnership between the federal, state, city, county? I mean, where do we get started, I guess, to bring all the, the new, you know, types of the clean energy?
I, I think that that's a great question, I think it varies a lot as you go state to state. Some states have a lot more incentives for those kind of things, working with the utilities, have more partnerships for that. One of the things that had happened about ten years ago was there was the Federal Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grants. I haven't heard anything about that being on the table, but that was a program that gave cities you know, several million dollars, I think we got here in Fort Lauderdale to start things like that. I think it's really a matter of, you know, kind of looking for the opportunities and trying to really prioritize things. And the other piece, one of the things I mentioned was, you know, was putting this into our decision making and when you start to think, look at things from a life cycle cost perspective. It makes things make more sense in terms of the, there, you know, everything I presented to you, there's a certain payback with renewable energy right now is around a twelve to thirteen year payback. That may be a little longer than we'd like, but it's still there and energy efficiency could be a couple of years. It depends on, on the opportunity and it may be you start with the ones that have the best payback and you build up or you you balance it out and you do some of the renewable energy at a maybe a slower pace and renewable energy, the cost has actually really been decreasing substantially and in Florida because of the way our utility is structured, we have less options. In the legislature this year, they tried to modify that and allow cities to use something called a power purchase agreement where essentially you release solar, but I don't believe that passed, but that's, there's still mechanisms here that we don't have advantage of. So we really have to look at what is the low hanging fruit and what really works within the resources that we have.
So interesting, well, hopefully, I guess, as the twenty thirty greenhouse gas pollution reduction plan is coming out, hopefully, they will have some funding opportunities and it looks like Tesla also offers some solar panels, maybe we can talk to our friends at Elon Musk and Boring, getting said they're cheaper. So maybe we can find some alternative plans.
Okay. All right, uh.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your presentation. Moving on, why don't we? The closed session doesn't start till four thirty, so why don't we go on to commission reports between now and then? So Vice Mayor, do you have any reports to share with us today?
Thank you, Mayor, let's see. Alan or Chris, any updates on the executive orders that came out yesterday? Anything that you can just help kind of wrap our minds around that? What does it mean for us as a city? What does it mean for businesses? I did have one business email me and ask if they have to continue to wear masks at their place of business. Any, I know it's kind of complicated, short answer?
I can start, there's a lot of ramifications, obviously, as, as you know, the governor issued two orders yesterday. One tied into new legislation, which doesn't take effect until July first, which and then the second order, which suspends all local COVID nineteen restrictions. So specifically to the business you were referring to, private businesses still can require if they want to, someone to wear a mask if they're gonna it's similar to, you know, no shoes, no shirt, no service type of thing, they still have control over that. The problem they may run into is the self policing aspect as it was at the beginning when the mask mandates came in. They may have folks challenging that based on the order. And so their staffs get kind of caught up in having to have those altercations with, with folks so that that may occur, but they, they do have a right from a private standpoint to do that. Us on the governmental side is a little different, obviously, we, we cannot, for example, restrict, at least in our interpretation public access to this meeting, for example, based on COVID nineteen restrictions, whether it be masks, social distancing. So it's still being vetted, obviously, these were issues yesterday, I mean, these were orders issued yesterday. Currently, there was a call, I think it ended with all the city attorneys. Some cities are taking different approaches than, than possibly we are, the counties taking one approach. Everyone is sort of looking at it differently. So depending on where you are and who you ask, generally, we read it and interpret it as I think the spirit of the orders are very clear, section one, that's very broad. So it appears that any restriction certainly with regards to the public, whether it be done as a regulatory type regulation as a city, or whether we do it just as a proprietor of this building, we'd be hard pressed to exclude public access based on any sort of COVID nineteen related restrictions. Beyond that, I mean, essentially, as they read, there are no restrictions to county. We were traveling under the county's order, the comprehensive exec, emergency order that was issued by the county. That is gone to the wayside because of this preemption and this particular order. So there are no restrictions, governmentally issued prohibitions or restrictions in place at this time.
Okay, so the, so in the past during the pandemic, we were allowed to be more restrictive than the governor's executive order. Currently now, we can't have any restrictions.
Correct, we're completely preempted from having any restrictions related to COVID nineteen. There is one caveat in the order, which gets a little convoluted as well, which is cities, local governments obviously still retain the right to obviously legislate on the, the health and safety of, of folks.
It's the new legislation or executive order, did that limit the length of time a city or county can issue? A state of emergency, did it seem like it was kind of limited?
I haven't fully read it, I know that it does give the legislature now, it does give the governor the ability to override local. I do know that and that's why the first order, the twenty dash one oh one is, starts July first, because at that point, he, he basically invalidates all the local ordinances, which he only has the power to do through this new legislation in July. It also gives the legislature, the ability, the Florida legislature, the ability to override the governor on his pandemic or, or emergency type. But beyond timing and all that, I don't know all the specificities yet, I haven't read through the whole, the new law. He just signed it yesterday.
Does that mean we all have to come back to City Hall by July first? Does that mean we all, we have five of us instead of three of us?
That's a, it's a little different analysis there, as you know, we have a resolution in place, which we amended back in twenty twenty as all this was developing. That resolution and the ability of a commissioner or board member to be able to participate remotely is contingent upon the existence of a state of emergency. Technically, we're riding under the governor's state of emergency, that is still in place because he actually needs that in order to promulgate all these these different orders that he's doing now, including the prohibition on vaccine passports. So that's been kept in place for another sixty days, I highly suspect at the end of those sixty days, it will be done because that new legislation is going to kick in July first and that'll give him the authority to kind of knock everything out.
Right, so I think it seems like by July first, everything will be back to normal.
Currently.
Back to work.
Right, from a technical standpoint, you know, technically, our resolution does read and is contingent on the state of emergency. However, it, it's, it may be difficult to defend because again, we sort of went on the fringes a bit there with the physical quorum aspect of it and said that we didn't need a physical present quorum because it wasn't specifically stated as physical in Florida statutes. We may be pushing the limits if every other regulation is gone and we still have remote. It's a little harder to defend at that point, remote participation by commissioner if other regulations are gone and that would be the only point from a practical standpoint.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that and I know it is complicated and it's interesting that was legislation and executive order kind of combined together.
It caused some confusion yesterday because the first order issued was based on legislation, which had the date of July first. So at first, we thought that it was July first and then immediately thereafter, there was a suspension of the local regulations, which was effective immediately.
Okay, thank you for that, I think that helps, let me see. Lots of annual meetings going on in District One. I went to the Children's Diagnostic and Treatment Center today, Ben, up in your area, just to tour that. It's a great organization under Broward Health that really treats our zero to three, the population, it actually treats a lot older too in different areas. And hopefully you all can have the chance to go tour it and see what they're doing over there. I know Mayor, you participated in something, I think they had a little parade or something recently, you and Chevron Jones. Did something with the Children's Diagnostic and Treatment Center they were telling me about.
It was, it was a volunteer day, volunteer recognition day a few weeks ago at the Children's Diagnostic and Treatment Centers.
Okay, great, we're so fortunate to have organizations like that here in our community. Let's see, um, let's see, we're coming up. So I have been participating in the monthly meetings for the Washington Summit that the Fort Lauderdale Chamber puts on every other year. So this year, they've been talking about it and they, they actually came out their date recently and it's a commission meeting day, I don't have, any of you all been to the Chambers Washington Summit? Do you attend, Steve?
But I've attended three of them over the last six years.
It, it's a, it's a wonderful trip and I encourage you all to attend if you can because we bring a delegation really just from Fort Lauderdale, it's a really Fort Lauderdale centric.
Well, it's a great, no, it's a greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Congress.
Right, but it's kind of so Fort Lauderdaleish.
So anywhere, any, those, those members who, who belong to the chamber from throughout the county are encouraged to participate and they accept up to seventy-five participants. Usually a congressperson sponsors it and, and that congressperson's office sets up a number of meetings with other legislators, lobbyists, department heads of the administration. And it's an excellent way for our community to, to spread our message and.
Right, and bring our legislative priorities to DC.
And more importantly than all of that, it's an unbelievable opportunity to network with people who participate whose paths you may not ever cross even in your own city. I met so many people that I never would have really run into here in the city, but through that summit. So it's, that to me is an important part of what that summit is all about.
So it is, and I've done additional summits, whether it was Florida League of Cities or National League of Cities also in DC. And I have found that Chamber one to be especially helpful and beneficial because we do go mostly as a delegation from this area. My point is it's the same week as a commission week and if anyone would like to go from this commission.
Well, maybe we need to.
They need to change, yeah, we may need to change. And I would encourage you, if you do have the opportunity and time to really attend that, I, I think it'd be great for Chris to attend also if he can. I was just really impressed even with the speakers they brought in. It was just, it was really well done and they take an entire year to plan it and, like I said, really focus on our priorities and.
So the meetings, the meeting's on the nineteenth?
Well, it's, it's, they're going Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday that week of commission week and it's, like I said, they just kind of came out with the date, so that's why I'm bringing it up to you all.
Maybe we can move the, maybe we can move the meeting to the eighteenth?
Monday?
Talking May or June?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really far ahead, I'm sorry, Steve. October. Sorry, but they did announce the date and I wanted to bring it up, does, is everyone planning for Christmas yet? I've already made, I'm kidding, I'm not that far ahead. I actually, I know, anyone that knows me, I'm usually six months ahead of my, my plans.
You've got all that silver to polish for me.
I know, I know, and that's Thanksgiving, that'll be done by then.
So we could either go to the eighteenth on Monday, we could do it that Thursday and just realize we were going to come back for Thursday. We could even push it to the following week, which would make them, have meetings two consecutive weeks on the twenty-sixth as well as November two. But if you want to get it completely away from the week of the nineteenth, we could also just move it forward one week.
I mean, maybe the eighteenth Monday, is that too difficult for everybody?
Well, I'm, I'm, just got, someone just sent me a text that the actual days are Monday through Wednesday, so.
Someone said Monday through Wednesday, so I was, okay, so good, I'm glad they're texting you.
So we could do it on Thursday, the twenty-first or the following week.
Thursday is good for me, twenty-first.
For you? Check those, check religious holidays in October, something.
Yeah, I don't.
Run into that, I don't know.
I don't see anything on my calendar that, and I have holidays turned on on my calendar.
Okay, good.
I'll check.
I have holidays too, so, so maybe we can look at the twenty-first.
Holidays usually.
I would really encourage, like I said, each of you all to try to attend too, it was really beneficial summit.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, a lot of other stuff coming up, glad Memorial Day plans, are we, we are having our event on Monday for Memorial Day?
American Beach Party.
Well, that's on Saturday. We are officially doing our event that we always do at the cemetery?
Yeah, I have, I've been working with Parks and Rec on that.
Okay, super, thanks Ben, so I, I will look forward to attending.
Let me give you a little info, Vice Mayor on that and Commissioners. So Memorial Day, May thirty-first, nine AM, nine AM to ten AM at the cemetery there.
Okay, good.
That's Memorial Day itself.
Memorial Day itself, yeah, Monday, May thirty-first, nine AM to ten AM at the, at the cemetery.
Anything on the river, didn't we always used to do another event on the river that day? By the Sandy Neninger statue?
Usually at eleven o'clock, we do something at the Sandy Neninger statue, that's something that the, one of the local American Legion posts does, so we'd have to confirm that they're.
We should check with that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, good point, I haven't, just for whatever it's worth, I haven't heard anything about that plan for at Sandy Neninger, Mayor.
Okay, and the last thing I wanted to invite you all to, if you are able to attend, and we just planned this recently, so forgive me for the last minute invitation, but we are going to have a bench dedication in the Galt Ocean Drive for PO, I raised it. Tomorrow at four, if anybody else, Steve, I know you, if you can make it.
I'll be there.
Okay, super, or anybody else that wants to come too? We're going to have a bigger event in the fall, we're actually going to dedicate a park to PO. And, but tomorrow is just the bench, so thank you all for coming. Lots of other meetings, air shows, Lotterie Trail coming up with Ben, but that's it for me, thanks.
Before we move on. Before we move on, Mayor, we're looking at the Chambers website here and it looks as though they're publishing October eighteen through twenty-first as the Washington.
They gotta, they gotta narrow this down.
Well, that's Tuesday through Friday, so that would impact us considering Thursday as.
All right, so we want to do it on a Monday or the following Tuesday, sixth?
I mean, Dan told me it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Usually is Tuesday.
Yeah, Dan and.
Okay, so Monday, yeah, so the day we could pick that week if we want to be at the whole thing is Friday.
Friday night.
Or the following week.
Or the following week.
Or maybe we should just check first, we have till October.
Yeah, we can check, we have six months.
Not even a schedule yet.
I don't think you have to set it right now, I mean, let's just clear it, yeah, let's just make sure we know.
Okay, all right, got it.
All right, thank you.
No rush, right now.
Okay.
Be here before you know it.
Yes, it will. Yes, thank you, Mayor, I was just talking to the city manager, I'm sorry. I'm just so happy to be back, Mayor.
We're so happy to have you back.
Thank you. Yeah, I just realized also all those sleeves on the chairs are done, right?
Oh, they are.
We're, we're an open society.
Yes, we are, all right, well, thank you.
Well, I, you know, even though, let me just say this, even though we are officially open. We really encourage people not to come to City Hall. We really encourage people not to come to City Hall unless they've been vaccinated or unless they're wearing a mask. Or unless they're protecting themselves and others in some way. Because uh while the governor has been eager to open up our society and our communities. You know, we're not past COVID nineteen. I mean, we are still suffering. Deaths occur every single day as a result of this disease. So we encourage people to come to our, our meetings, but please be smart, be safe and, and get vaccinated. And we welcome you here, Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Alan, actually, one thing I wanted to just ask you about when you mentioned about the emergency order and I'll start with that. So I know the governor on April twenty-seventh extended the state of emergency for two months, right, from April twenty-seventh for sixty days.
Correct.
So just help me understand procedurally, if he extended a state of emergency. How does one then cancel everyone else's state of emergencies? Cause under his authority as the governor, he can restrict, preempt. The local enactment of restrictions. If there's any restrictions to be imposed, for example. The prohibition on vaccine passports, it would issue from the governor's office as under his emergency management power. And under the constitution. But technically, the state is actually under a state of emergency right now? Mm-hmm, for another sixty day, well, a little less than sixty days. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's confusing a little bit how. Can be, yes. You can have that statewide state of emergency, but then the municipalities can't have a state of emergency. As, cause it's, it's, it's state of, his state of emergency actually enables him to be able to continue issuing. Executive orders as the state's emergency management authority under the statute. So he needs that emergency, the state of emergency in place.
But if we, if he, if he says that local um, local rules. That we have, that we have enacted under the governor's state of emergency order. Those, those, he's now saying there, there, you can no longer use his emergency order to enact those rules. We can independently um uh declare a state of emergency, but it only lasts a week, right?
We cannot.
Well, we can, we have those.
Not COVID related.
Not COVID related?
We are completely preempted.
Sorry. We can have a hurricane emergency.
Nothing COVID related.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's an interesting dynamic. Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. Uh, Wednesday, April twenty-one was Flagler Village Civic Association, also points at a Heights Civic Association. Um, Thursday, April twenty-second. Again, I attended a solid waste working group meeting and I believe Chris will have on the next May agenda. Um, a presentation uh on what's been happening on all those meetings I've been attending. Uh, with Melissa Doyle, Program Manager in Public Works.
Yes.
So we'll get everybody caught up um in the loop. There's been a lot of interesting discussion um. Since I've been attending those meetings and we'll get everybody up to speed on that. Uh, Saturday, April twenty-fourth was the uh Florida AIDS Walk, really good crowd. Um, also stopped off at the uh Los Solos Ocean Side Park known as the Loop for the Ocean Soul Art of the Possible. It was an amazing exhibit of art, all from ocean trash, uh mostly from flip flops. And uh this company, uh if you ever go to their website, I just found it fascinating. They actually basically employ an entire village in Kenya, I believe. What was it Nigeria? It might have been Niger, I'm confusing two different groups. Um, and the amount of work that gets done. In producing these pieces of art was incredible. Um, huge pieces of art, animals, uh sea life. You name it. And everyone was just really amazed at uh the work that was produced. It was great. Um, also that day was Care's Day. Uh, thank you to George again and his crew. I was able to stop off in Lake Ridge for the Little Free Library installation ribbon cutting. Tuesday, April twenty-seven, South Middle River Civic Association meeting. Um, Monday, uh, May third, I did have another uh meeting uh with our tenant at Bahia Mar. And, and again, had another meeting yesterday uh as well. Um, everyone is looking forward to this coming Saturday and Sunday. Um, the airshow is returning to Fort Lauderdale Beach. Um, and also Sunday is obviously Mother's Day as well. Tuesday, May eleventh, uh International Swimming Hall of Fame Board Meeting, uh Wednesday, May twelfth, Seaboard Bend. Um, Thursday, May thirteenth is an interesting meeting for motels and hotels on the beach. There's a hurricane preparedness meeting for the Barrier Island Hotels and Motels. Um, also a Breakers Avenue Stakeholders Meeting and that one's moving along as well. Uh, really pleased with the progress on that. Uh, Monday, uh Stranahan House will have a be, have a groundbreaking on um the new uh visitor center there. Um, between twelve and three, I'm sorry, between ten and eleven. Uh, let's see, and just a couple of comments. Um, Chris just was wondering if you can give us an update. I get asked this all the time about manning the police substation at the Los Solos Ocean Side Park.
Yeah, we mentioned that yesterday and I just don't have an update for you yet. I will get one uh maybe during our break and provide it to you tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, also wanted to announce that May is National Historic Preservation Month. Um, Raj, this one, I don't know if Raj is still around, but uh I'm getting a lot of questions from the folks in the Los Solos Isles about the undergrounding. Um, now it looks like it may be coming to us uh in June, but we've really got to get started on that. The neighborhood is chomping at the bit for that work and I'm just trying to find out when we can actually start the work. Uh, originally we were told that we would see that uh come to us as an agenda item in April, then May, and now I'm hearing June. Um, but really just trying to find out when that work can actually start. That will actually be the first neighborhood. Uh, to have a shovel in the ground and get working on this undergrounding that's been going on for about a decade now.
So we'll see if we can find Raj and have him come to the podium as soon as we can get him back in the room to answer that.
Great, thanks. Would just love to see that happen as quickly as possible. Um, and then lastly, uh, Chris, I know we talked about this yesterday when we talked about the agenda, but. Um, I just wanted to make sure and I see Clarence is in the room too. Uh, we've talked about this in the past about many projects that have been approved in the CRA. And they just seem to be languishing and um tying up millions of dollars and we still haven't seen developer agreements. And just was wondering if we have some sort of, you know, grid that can show us, you know, how long these products have been approved. Um, what is the status of them? Uh, what is, what's the chance of them actually moving forward to getting a developer's agreement? Do we have any update on that? And, you know, just looking at those dollars because they are becoming very scarce now.
They are. And uh we, we do have a list. Why don't we, well, Clarence is here. Clarence, why don't I just ask? I know I've asked this question almost monthly, uh trying to free up some dollars in the CRA if there's projects that are simply not going to happen. And I think we're consistently told that everything approved is still going to happen, but we'll let uh Clarence give us an update.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Um, we have uh, we have put together a report uh that we can provide for you monthly. Actually, we've been providing it. Um, there's a, with the report, there's three different categories. We have uh a category where we have projects that are actually in progress right now. We have projects that have been funded, but they have not uh started or have agreements, as you mentioned. And then we have a pipeline of projects. The projects that are funded, but they don't have agreements at this point. They're in various stages of uh uh getting their permits, getting their plans all done. And we are monitoring those projects and are, we basically have a tight leash on. And uh if they're not moving forward, we will pull the money and recirculate it or put it back into. Um, right now it would have to be capital improvement projects, but uh trying to. I guess the best thing that could potentially happen is that if we were able to take that money and put it back into incentives. But uh currently the policy doesn't allow for us to do that. So uh, but we'll be working that out.
Okay, good. No, I'll, I'll look forward to seeing that because I, I, you know, I just wondering. Cause some of them are going on years now that we've approved and we just have not seen anything happen.
Um, and, and again, we are in contact with the developers and everybody tells us that they're close. So, but we are monitoring.
Okay.
And, and I'll.
So are we going to be able to have that uh that?
We can, we, I can get it to you as soon as tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll give it to you, get it to you tomorrow.
I'll share my copy with you. No, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McKenzie?
I'm good, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, great couple of weeks. Just want to highlight a few things. Had a great uh, been at Southside School on the twenty-fifth. Uh, with Parks and Rec Department, kind of putting it together. Uh, SIP Sounds and Splats, which is a uh time for community members to do art and do some cooking. And that was great. Had a great uh Mad Dash for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Which I got to run in my first five K in many, many years and thankfully did not have to ask for. Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue to provide medical assistance to me. So that was great. What's that?
Aren't you a runner?
I've run, but you know, five K for me is a long way. Uh, so I did, I did push it a little bit, Mayor.
What was your time, Ben? But I can look it up online, but what was your time?
He just finished before the meeting.
He's gonna say like fif- fifteen minutes.
What is that, about thirteen, fourteen miles? What's five K?
But, no, it's like three point one or something.
Three point two.
Three point two.
Three point one, three point two, something like.
Under thirty minutes.
Yeah, so I ran twenty-eight minutes and thirty seconds or something, Vice Mayor.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you. It was uh, it was good, but great, great turnout and great, um, just great event for important cause. Um, so that was great. And then just a couple items to chat. Um, as we talk about COVID and we talk about vaccines and, you know, there are certain. Oh, populations that we're seeing lower vaccination rates. I just, I don't know, maybe staff has been talking with. With folks about this, but is, is there anything as a city, as city officials, we should be doing as collectively as a city to promote? People getting vaccines and, and so forth. Uh, I just want to lift that up as a.
So, um, Ben, I'm going to have Chris uh bring us up to date as to some ideas that's been tossed around. And maybe we can give him some direction as a result. Chris, do you want to talk to, uh, talk to the commissioner about what we've been discussing?
Sure. Yeah, obviously we've been looking at just any way that we can get vaccines into the community. Um, we heard from uh Broward Health when they moved away from the vaccine setup at the, at the soccer stadium was because. Really, right now in Florida, there's a vaccine available to anyone who wants one. And they were seeing people go into Walgreens, CVS, Publix, now Walmart, um, any of those places. They were seeing just a. Great falloff in the number of people that were showing up for vaccinations, literally to where they had like a hundred and fifty in a day. Um, and so they uh chose to change their focus from that vaccine site to vaccine hesitancy. Uh, Mayor and I met with their leadership over the weekend and they provided some, a good context, some good ideas. Um, they certainly are willing to do things with us if we want to uh, if we want to have some type of a pop-up in the community. Uh, we also yesterday had a very productive phone conversation with Walmart. Um, and their desire to do uh some weekend, Sunday afternoon events, pop-up events at Broward Boulevard ninety-five at that location in Fort Lauderdale. Now, the mayor's reached out to a, an executive with the Publix uh grocery stores in hopes that we can potentially uh acquire. Uh, discounted gift cards, maybe as a uh, um, as a, as an incentive to uh, to somebody to become. Uh, or to uh, to demonstrate that they've received both vaccines, something we could uh deliver at City Hall.
Chris, is that retroactive?
It is not.
I was just checking. I'm just checking.
And uh, and, and finally, one of the uh communications I had over the weekend and uh, and I want to follow back up with her this week. I just haven't had a chance to. Um, do it yet with our Monday and Tuesday planning in the advance of these meetings. Um, is I had a, a good exchange with uh Jermaine at the Urban League uh over the weekend and want to connect with her and see. What she's hearing, what uh, what they're experiencing or if they have any ideas that we might uh use as an organization to assist. Um, in getting that word out that you talk about. When you look at the uh number of percentage of people vaccinated, then you compare that to zip code. We do definitely have some areas in our city that are less served than, than other zip codes. Um, certainly vaccine is a personal choice. Uh, we certainly would encourage it. Um, but uh, those are some of the concepts that we've been discussing, trying to figure out how we. How we provide value. And, you know, we don't want to become just another CVS, Walgreens or, or Publix. Uh, because those exist and anybody who wants one can go walk into any of those locations today and get one. Uh, so we really are trying to figure out how we, how we provide meaning and impact in areas that uh, that don't have such ease of access.
So, um, does, is, is Chris on the right path here in considering incentives like these gift cards and things like that? We're trying to do our best to find ways to encourage people. So uh, when he asked me, I, I thought it was a good idea. Does that, does that seem like he's on the right path?
Are there any media campaigns we could kind of tap into?
I'm sorry?
Are there any media campaigns that we could?
Well, in addition to that, in addition to.
I mean, it seems like the problem isn't the availability of the vaccines. I mean, I know you're offering incentives. It's, it's getting people to want to take it. Um, I mean, I don't even know if I've shared that. I've been fully vaccinated. You know, I think we should all share, communicate. Tell our story just to encourage others also and maybe other people in the city.
Well, I remember when I first got my vaccine and it was printed in the newspaper. I was criticized for getting my vaccine. Because I, like, you know, I shouldn't be there, even though I was over sixty-five. So, I mean, it was, it's been a weird dynamic as this vaccine has been rolled out. Uh, but I agree with you. Education is very, very important and uh trying to encourage people to get vaccinated. So, I mean, I don't think there's any one methodology that's going to, that we can rely on. I think we got to employ a whole. Whole series of different approaches.
One thing I didn't, or two things I didn't touch on. Uh, one is I did approach the Department of Health in Broward to see if they needed any assistance. As they rolled out their campaign this week in high schools across Broward County. Um, and uh they were able to handle that without any Fort Lauderdale assistance. And I had a good communication earlier today with the CEO of uh Broward Health at Imperial Point. Uh, who provided some different articles that said that incentives were actually a good mechanism to encourage vaccination. So there is some now, a study done out there that was in the, in the medical world saying that incentives are good to look at. If you're going to try to uh figure out what you uh, what is, is of interest to people.
Krispy Kreme Donuts.
Uh, well, what was studied, I don't know that we would want to, it was studied in the uh, in, in the article he sent me and I'm not sure we would want to do it.
Should go to all the, all the Mexican restaurants tomorrow for Cinco de Mayo and see if we can, everybody who goes, you know. I mean, places where we know people are going to congregate, you know. I don't know. I'm just.
Didn't Publix have a ten dollar gift card if you got vaccinated there?
The thing we, I don't know, I know they do something for the flu shot. I don't know.
Was it maybe it was a flu shot? No, maybe it was that, but that would be good if they.
The thing we have to have is we have to have a medical partner. I would have somebody to administer it. You know, we can talk about incentives and media campaigns all day long. But I can't go give somebody uh one. We have to coordinate that with somebody that, that can. Be a lot easier if we were with the one-shot vaccine because wherever we pop up, we have to pop up three weeks from now. Um, and people have to pop back. So, you know, it's, it's a. When you, when you talk to somebody like a Walmart and they say Sunday afternoon, well, we have to commit. If we're going to commit to the next three Sunday afternoons, we have to commit to the next six. Because, you know, it's always that rolling, rolling schedule.
And, and Chris, sorry. Sorry, I might have missed that, Chris. In terms of right now, where folks can get vaccines, what, what, what do we have um a- available?
Snyder Park, no waiting. I can tell you, I took, took Paul la- last week, two, three in the afternoon. We were the first car in line and maybe the only one in the park.
Okay.
You know, so absolutely no waiting at Snyder Park and uh we'll keep it open. Uh, so that's one I would encourage.
Yes.
Um, any of, any of the drugstores that uh are advertising as having COVID vaccines. Um, I mentioned a couple and that was not because I intended on leaving anybody out, so I apologize if I did. Uh, but I know of CVS, Walgreens, Publix and Walmart. And I know I've seen in some advertisements that Windexy is too. I don't know about in Fort Lauderdale. I don't think we have a Windexy with a pharmacy in Fort Lauderdale.
Lockhart? Lockhart, yeah, that's where I got my shot.
Is still there. Um, the state took it over from Broward Health. So we'll see how long it continues to operate if we don't have a line at Snyder Park. So.
Okay.
They have two sites set up that neither of them have tremendous need. You know, at some point they're going to uh.
Yeah, it wasn't very busy.
Tone that back to one. Right now, we still have the National Guard assigned to Snyder Park, so our expenses are, are less to keep that one open than to keep the one at the drive.
Chris?
Sir?
Um, I know uh when we started with this pandemic, I know um some of my needs were different. Uh, because of um, a lot of, of folks in my district, um, not all, um, don't, the elderly don't have. don't, the elderly don't have transportation and I often reached out to you for um, to see if there's a mobile vaccine. Have we um, discovered anybody that's doing that or where we can tap into that? Because I think uh, at least in, 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 in my district, um, most of my seniors, most of them uh, found a way because they were just grasping, you know, for hope and grasping for, for, for something to give them comfort. So the moment they were able to get it anywhere, they drove, they went and they got, got it done. I still find some folks that are kind of um, mobile physically, uh, um, not mobile physically that can't um, can't get there. I'm still looking for that, for that vehicle, uh, if there's such a thing out there.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we tried that for a couple of days with the fire department. It just, it became a, a real staffing um hardship, but if it, if you think mobile vaccinations i- in your district would work, I would absolutely explore. Re-energizing that.
Yeah, exactly. Cause I mean, I gave, I, I asked you about one in particular. So I mean, I never heard back, so I thought we didn't have. So uh, it's good to know that we have access. I didn't get a, you know, lines from the people, but I think that's one of the things that I'm hearing out there in terms of um, that could be another alternative for us. I don't know. It's just something I'm throwing out to the group.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's great. Um, Commissioner and, and, and Chris, any way we can support that or that's, that's great. Mayor, another thing that I'm seeing s- some states do and so forth is just reaching out to the business community and saying, you know, hey, local businesses, if there's incentives you can provide. So I've done that with some of the businesses in my district, so that can just be another idea for us when we're talking with business, you know, a, a free drink if you get a shot uh, a vaccine or.
Shot for a shot.
That's a good one.
Yep. Exactly. So that's, that's an idea too. Um, okay, great. That, that sounds good. I, I wanted to just check on that. Um, Mayor, I also just got from our uh crack team of uh um, resolution writers, uh, Mary Furtig and Stell Brennan and uh um, others and Zoe, um, a draft of the resolution. So I just forwarded that to Chris and Alan for their review for, to bring it back to us tonight, if that's all right?
Very good.
Okay, great. Um, next topic, Mayor, is I was uh, I was talking to um, brought up in my pre um, agenda meeting um, with staff uh, of, of fraud, waste and abuse hotline. As a city, we don't really have a fraud, waste and abuse hotline, like a, almost Mayor, like a whistleblowers line, right? Um, so you can, you can kind of establish these lines. You can have them run by a third party that can be a, you know, a helpful um, uh, venue for someone to uh articulate concerns and so forth. And so um, the city auditor had some experience in kind of researching that a while ago. And so um, just want to see if there's maybe appetite for him to come back to us and, and give us some, some data about that possibility.
You're talking about fraud, waste and abuse within the city government?
Exactly, yep.
Do we have?
Yeah.
Waste and abuse in the city government?
Sadly, yes, we do.
Okay, uh, do we have?
And I think that's endemic to any large organization. You're always gonna have that. Th- this is something that we had explored probably ten, twelve years ago. And there was no appetite among city management or the higher commission at that point uh, to go ahead and establish one. Um, the thinking being that we have the Office of the Inspector General at the county level and it would be duplicative uh, to have a function here in the city that does the same thing. So we had explored uh, bringing on a, an outside third party that would screen the calls and giving them up between those that would be more HR professional standards related. Those that might still fall under the purview of the Inspector General and those that would be appropriate for my office to investigate. But again, like I said, there wasn't an appetite at the time, so we put that one aside. Uh, we are happy to go back, do some more research on current state and bring it back to the commission if that's something you have an interest in.
Doesn't, the Inspector General, the O, the OIG has sort of limited authority anyway, right? So this would be like a hotline or something within that would, that someone could call anonymously to report something.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll pull the mic, I'll tell you. Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry. Um, it's like, it's like a hotline where someone can call anonymously and uh uh, and report something that they suspect might be, you know, in, inappropriate. Is that kind of what we're talking about?
That, that is correct. And yes, the, the Inspector, actually, the Inspector General has a very broad mandate to investigate countywide, all fraud and mismanagement among both uh elected officials and staff, uh contracting procurement processes and everything of that nature. Um, so this would be along the same lines. Now, just as a, as a matter of practice, I do get anonymous um, reports on an, on a regular basis and we look into those. And if they merit further investigation, we will take action on those.
Do you refer them to the OIG?
Uh, we have referred to the OIG. I've also referred to the State Attorney's Office for public corruption. And on some of them, we handle them internally. We've worked with uh, the uh, with the folks over at PD. And we have referred some over to HR. So if it's really more, again, like I said, if we have a harassment claim or something of that nature, that is really not you know, in our purview. If it, uh, if it has something to do with improprieties in the contracting process or allegations of a, of a, of a financial nature, then that's something that we would look into. And, and again, we would, we would collaborate where appropriate with the, with the, with the folks over in PD or, or HR as needed.
Well, then maybe it would be dup- duplicative. I mean, Commissioner Sorenson, since, since there is a mechanism already in place, may, you know, maybe we don't need to be redundant.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's duplicative. I think uh, the uh, OIG, my understanding, I mean, Alan and John can speak those better than I do, but uh, their, their um, kind of ability and interest in pursuing city-specific matters is um, you know, limited by resources and so forth. So I, this is a self-policing mechanism. It's a transparency mechanism. Um, I, I don't, I, I think a huge number of cities have a fraud, waste and abuse hotline. In the federal government, you know, I'm a, I'm a, being in the Navy, I'm in the federal government. Um, it's an important part of feder- federal government regulation. Um, so I think it's at least worth uh, looking into and seeing kind of what, what the options might be.
Okay, Ben, I'm sorry. Questioner. Sure. What you're asking is, so I understand it, is um, very similar to what the mayor is saying, a hotline, a line they can call.
Exactly.
Independent, autonomous of subordinate and subordinate relationships, where I could feel free calling saying um, McKenzie did A, B, C, D. Okay.
Exactly.
Thank.
Or saying like, hey, I'm in some department in the city and someone's been inflating prices. And uh, I don't know who to report this to. And then the third party gets it, evaluates it, and then, you know, helps make sure we're doing the right thing. So.
Okay.
Okay, is that fair to get John to do a little work on that possibility?
Um, so where will we go from here on?
So honestly, I'm, I'm fascinated that it was rejected as strongly as John tells me that it was years ago. Um, because the way to not have an issue with a fraud, waste or abuse line is not participate in fraud, waste or abuse. So um.
I, I endorse that.
I would certainly.
Well, well, city man, you gotta understand, different policymakers think and feel different. Just like we say, whether can do, um, people change, people think differently, maybe the policymakers or CM at that time did not think it necessary and it, it, you know, it, it, it reached a level of resistance. Now you have this group saying, hey, we, we may want to look into this. Um, and, and do it. So I like your enthusiasm, uh, how you turned and said you cannot believe. So maybe you'll take the bull by the horns and figure this out for us.
Yeah, so let, let me just follow up on that. The, the reason I use that term was because I would like to know what maybe I'm missing. Because if it was, if it was something that was um, you're rejected as strongly as it was, I'm trying to process in my head what I'm missing. So I, I think the, the concerns that were expressed at the time is that it could potentially be utilized as a mechanism for personal axe-to-grind type things between employees. As well as uh, to be candid, they were worried that it could create potential black eyes for the city. Not everybody was in favor of the auditor's office when it was established. It took them a couple of years to finally fill the position after it was created by referendum. So whilst we would always hope that good governance is what we all want in actual practice, um, sometimes they prefer not to look quite as closely at their own practices.
Okay. Okay. That's great. So John, you good moving forward?
Um, I'm happy to uh, happy to do some research and we'll, we'll bring a, we'll bring a report back to the commission at, at the meeting. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Last question, Mayor. Maybe Chris was gonna cover this in his report, but um, Chris, just wanted a little update on the police chief search and kind of a little bit of timeline, what's next? And then also, Chris, I was interested in um, the, I think you've mentioned before, there'll be some kind of public participation or engagement, if you can sh- share a little bit about.
Yes, what I can share is since my report of the last meeting, everything is still on the same track or same process timeline wise that I reported on two weeks ago. Uh, let me ask Tarlisha to come to the podium. Uh, she's been working the closest with the recruiter. I know that we were starting to see uh, some pared down lists of, of what the recruitment firm would be indicating are the candidates that we start to engage with in the form of of interviews and other participation opportunities. Um, so uh, let me turn it over to uh, Tarlisha to give the more in, more in detail uh, update.
Hello again.
Hello.
Tarlisha Smith, Assistant City Manager and Human Resources Director. Yes, we are currently working with Gary Peterson, the ex- and his executive search firm. Right now, the uh, application process actually closed on the twenty third. We had forty eight applicants and we are pairing it down to ten for review for the manager's office and to bring those uh, forward for a smaller number to review. But we just literally received the binder on uh, yesterday to start pairing that down because we can't bring that many forward. So once we review that and pair it down within the next week or so, we will be ready uh, to come forward with the next phase of the process. And uh, I think Commissioner Sorenson was the commissioner who alluded to the uh, community-based discussions that we may have. We did some initial outreach. Not we, because we're letting everything uh, at this point or this stage rest with the executive search firm uh, because of his expertise. But in that regard, we um, gave him the opportunity and several names of stakeholders in the community who have expressed an interest in the process. He had an opportunity to have conversations with them and get some information and that has shaped up what we're moving forward with. So once we have all the uh, candidates at a the stage where we pared down the numbers, we can move forward with those discussions and present the candidates.
So, so what you're saying to, right now is that we've had community outreach, because I've expressed stuff from the beginning about community outreach and I haven't had any one reach out to me or my community about outreach. Now, what the recruiter did himself, I mean, you just said that there were some stakeholders from Commissioner Sorenson uh, that were contacted. Um, as.
Hold on, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, as recent as, as last Friday, I talked about, you know, the community wanted to engage in this process uh, up in the attorney's office. So uh, when are we gonna have a real, a real community outreach is the question. I think Commissioner's talking about, not just he's gonna go and say, it's, it's Furtig or it's McKenzie and it's, it's Ben. He's talking about a real outreach to participate in this process, because this is what I thought um, was the directive of the commission and I could be wrong. Um, if that's not the directive, uh, but I know that's some of my inputs initially was to go down that road where the community had more input. Um, since we don't have that input, it's a city manager card, I understand that. Uh, but at the same time, uh, because of the black eye we had suffered, you know, um, on a couple of occasions, we wanted to make sure the community vetted this process and, and we got the um, the uh, the, the right fit.
Commissioner McKenzie, uh, to restate what I said before, I, I want to make sure I did not misspeak. We did not uh, do anything at the direction of any of the commissioners, including Commissioner Sorenson. To date, we gave information from some of the stakeholders that have initially expressed interest um, in the process, um, being uh, some of the business leaders in the community, some of the um, homeowners associations. I can't speak specifically to the ones that Gary Peterson reached out, but he just reached out to do a poll of sorts to see some of the pressure points that we've experienced in the recent past. And with that information, we're coming for, for a full community um, discussion uh, when the candidates are presented. We did not do that with the ones that we have to date, but with the forty eight, because it's too many to bring forward. So when we narrow the, the pool down, we'll bring that information forward. And we purposely at this point have not had any um, commission involvement so that we don't have any issues with the candidates, any political concerns.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, but can we share those uh, folks that we reached out to, which HOA, so we can make sure that the ones that were left out are included?
Absolutely. We, we initially provided the list at, at the beginning of the process, but we can send it out again, uh, Commissioner McKenzie.
Thanks.
Yes, you're welcome.
Great, Tarlisha. So let me just make sure I'm kind of tracking this right. So got a bunch of applicants now. It sounds like maybe in a week or so, we can, and a little bit more, the idea is to pare it, that number down to a smaller group, is that right?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, and give me a round ballpark number, ten, around ten folks, five to ten folks?
Yes, the goal is to get anywhere between eight and ten, but we, I, we don't really know that or how many candidates we're gonna have until we get to a certain point. If it's twelve that we have to look at, at the manager's level before we bring the candidates, we just don't know that number. A safe number for us to get to, so it's not uh, really, you know, big waste of time. We're really trying to move as expeditiously as we can to get someone in place uh, based on the current contract that we have with our interim chief. So the goal is to pair that number down to as low as ten, uh, maybe even eight uh, before we come forward to have the uh, manager have an opportunity to review based on the directives that have been given by the commission and the needs of the community and what we phrase in terms of pressure points, even preceding George Floyd.
Okay, great. So pared down to eight to ten, then the next step, once it's pared down around that number generally, then those uh, candidates are brought in for, the, to the city manager, right?
Yes.
Okay, then Chris gets to do whatever he wants to do um, at that point. And then this would be a question, a question for Chris or for you, whoever uh, appropriate. What happens next? What's the next step then?
So I'll, I'll take the answer to that. So i- i- in my head, I envision that the executive search firm is gonna get to a manageable number. Then I'm gonna try to take that manageable, manageable number and make it even more manageable. And then it will be the group somewhere, my gut tells me between three and five that we announce as uh, possible finalists and those will be the ones that we engage in forums with. Um, e- either in the community or with uh, members of our, our team, uh, members of uh, the FOP and others that uh, have asked for an opportunity to uh, uh, be a part uh, of the process and at least be heard as we make the best decision. Uh, on a, to make the best decision I know how to make for our, our team and our city.
Yeah, great. Okay, so that helps, Chris. So thanks. So again, Chris, you're gonna get, maybe in a week or two weeks, you're gonna get eight to ten folks, wh- whatever it may be, then you're gonna pare it down to about three to five um, that you're kind of comfortable with. And then those three to five would be able to uh, participate in some uh, way with the public, the public discussion or meeting the public or some form that that we as a commission would at least be aware of when it's happening and so forth. Is that?
That's what I envision at this point, yes. Um, again, we're, we're guided by a very, very responsible, professional um, executive search team. And so I'll, I'll, I'll follow that lead. Um, but if you're asking where my brain is at this point with the process, uh, that's where I am at, at this point.
Perfect. And, and in your, just, it, it sounds like, I mean, at the rate we're moving, maybe in, within a couple of months, have a, have a new chief or so.
It's always been anticipated based upon the timeline that we would be prepared to make some sort of an announcement late May or early June.
Late May or June. Okay, perfect. That's, that's great. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Tarlisha. That's very helpful. That's it, Mayor, that I've got.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, I just have a couple of things. Um, uh, again, I, I want to uh, invite the community, uh, Ralph Broward in South Florida to attend the Fort Lauderdale Air Show this weekend. It's both uh, Saturday and Sunday, May eighth and May ninth. Hope to, hope the weather's great and I'm sure it'll be a wonderful uh, a, a wonderful array of uh, of uh, flying machines. I'll be out there.
Such a way with words.
Um, also, uh, let's see, on Saturday, uh, the Museum of Discovery and Science is having an event of the Asian Pacific Heritage Month. I'll be there and I'll also be uh, uh, there hosting the, the new director general from Taiwan. I'll be there and I'll also be, they are hosting the, the new director general from Taiwan, who will be there in attendance. May 13th, we are opening the new Wawa on 6191 Powerline Road. Commissioner, will you be there? 9:00 AM? I heard they're giving out coffee. All right. And also on May 5th, which is tomorrow, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is beginning the launch of their new rebranding program. It's going to be called Visit Lauderdale. And it's at 5:00 PM at the Gulfstream Brewing Company on 13th Street, I believe in District 2. And let's see, a couple of things. We are, are we ever going to reinstate the scooter program?
If the commission wants to reinstate a scooter program, we can. I do believe that we need to recompete that. And that's the recommendation we've gotten with the advice of Alan's office and others. And I guess I just look to the commission for some direction there. I, I keep waiting for one of the other 31 cities in Broward County to be approached by the scooter companies and, and let it organically find its way to us.
It always starts here, though.
Us being the one that comes under attack from the scooters on the sidewalks first, but that's my editorializing. I, I recognize.
Just answer the question.
You want scooters back?
Yeah.
I would like scooters back, yeah.
Yes, I'm ready.
I think that.
Okay, so then we'll, we'll relook at that ordinance, we'll relook at the numbers. And I will chalk that one up as a loss.
Okay.
The caveat, Chris, is I've gotten a lot of feedback around just the, where we had them banned previously, maintaining that.
Maintain, yes, La Solas and A1A, yes, maintain the ban there. I agree.
Yep, the, the Barrier Island, La Solas, Riverwalk.
Riverwalk.
Riverwalk, yeah, okay.
Three places.
Thanks.
Also, all of a sudden Chick-fil-A has become very popular, especially Saturday and Friday nights. And we're getting a tremendous amount of complaints from the traffic jams.
We've been working on that a lot, but I'll let Chris give you that.
What are your thoughts? What are we doing?
Well, yeah, so we, we engaged with them and said, look, you've got to put some effort into, into this traffic. Cars are backing up onto, onto US1. And the response, the initial response I got from them was, please just be patient with us for a little while while we work to reopen our dining room. Because right now they're drive through only. And they believe that that's a large contributor to the fact that that backup happens because people cannot park and go in. And so we've been in contact with them to say, okay, we get that, but we still need to watch it when you open back up. And I think that's coming soon.
Okay.
And so I think that's the first thing we watch for to see if that alleviates any of the congestion just naturally. And if it doesn't, then I know Transportation and Mobility has been working with, working with them to see if there's an opportunity for a second curb cut onto US1 so that they would have two like the McDonald's adjacent to them has. So we're trying to come up with creative solutions based upon the fact that it's confined on that small parcel. And everybody loves Chick-fil-A. If I were Chick-fil-A, I would look at that and say, that's a sign that I need another store. So, but that's, that's what we're doing so far.
Okay.
We sent them a letter also, Mayor. So I mean, I have an email that I've drafted when I respond to my constituents that we can share with you of all the work we've done. Cause I know Ben Rogers has worked with them closely. I know Greg sent them a letter, a communication on behalf of the city. And they do have a second that people really don't know about, but it's a little bit more off of 26th Street. So hopefully they will reopen. We're hoping today, now that the governor's lifted everything, so that's, that's next.
Okay, great. Let's see. Talk to us about the northern portion of the sewer main projects. Why is it taking so much longer than the southern portion?
Raj, do you want to take that one? The thing I do know is that we're about three weeks away from completion of the project and about a month and a half worth of final restoration and the project will be complete on time compared to what we initially had said the project would take. But Raj, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I'm just reading the email from the project manager. And that says that we are waiting for Murphy to make the final connections. And we are looking at mid-June, the latest to make the final connection. We are still on time to have everything activated by the June end. The reason is that there are number of connections, they have to be, there are more number of connections and that, that's what I've been told. That number of connections on the northern segment, they are a little bit more complicated in terms of how they have to sew. So when we did the undergrounding, we went all the way deep and they were coming out. And then when they came, came out was obviously to try and do the best they can to avoid as many conflicts as possible. So, so I've been to many of their sites and, and unfortunately, you know, that's what this situation.
You are, you are looking over their shoulder. You are there.
I have, I have spoken in very harsh terms to the owner. I met with him at the intersection of 15th and 18th, right after you brought it to my attention.
Right.
And, and they have, they have added additional resources. But I think it is just the, the conflicts that they have to manage has been very challenging. And especially at that intersection, I'll tell you that twice they, they broke the, they broke the, the water main and it was not their fault. It is just that the water line at that location was so brittle that it broke like a piece of chalk. So then, now they are, they are running around and trying to address, you know, those issues while completing. So it is just that we just have a broken system, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how else to tell you. I'm sorry, anywhere you turn.
Just thinking, you know, just reciting the things, the, the, the concerns that people who live in the community want.
Yeah.
Does it have to do with the fact that when we do this directional project, that there's the straight drills, right? But then when they connect, they have to open cut to make the.
Yes, they have to come out and do the open cut because then they will have to connect with the other four mains. And that is what the challenge is. If there's a way to do it underground, it would have been much easier.
I just, just so that you know, you know, I live in that area and 15th Avenue and 18th Street, that ground has been exposed for months, like at least six months since before the holidays. And so I don't know what they're looking for there. I see a lot of piles of dirt being moved around from one place to another. I just today, when I was coming to this, to City Hall, I saw where an area is now covered over. So I assume they're making progress. But, you know, and I'm sure you're frustrated too. I understand that. But just keep in mind that, you know, it just seems like an untoward amount of time at that intersection to be able to make.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, contractually, you know, you know, when we give them the deadline, it just becomes extremely difficult to, other than goodwill. You know, there are times you have to have the steak and there are times you have to have the carrots.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. All right, I won't, I won't, I won't plague you with anything further. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else. Commissioners, do you have anything else you want to add to your reports? Okay, there being none, I guess, Mr. City Manager.
Hey, the items that I had on my list, we have discussed throughout Chief of Police Air Show, et cetera. The one item we haven't discussed yet is a response to Commissioner Glassman on undergrounding. And that was what we called Raj back to the room for. If I could ask him to do that quick update on undergrounding.
Do you have an answer?
Then, then we'll move into the closed door.
Okay.
My apologies, whoever asked that question. The undergrounding project, today I believe the attorneys from FPL and the city, they are meeting to finalize hopefully their remaining issues with FPL agreement. And we have been having a placeholder on our commission agenda to have these items on. And I'm hoping that, you know, they should resolve all their issues within next, I would like to believe in next couple of weeks at the latest. So the earliest estimated start date is sometime in July. We are still shooting for June. If we are able to get the item on the agenda for the first week in June, first meeting in June, then we'll probably give, we'll have to give about three weeks to four weeks' time for the contractor to mobilize. So we are on track and every day goes by, there is not a single day that I don't check with Bob Dunkle, the status. And, you know, so it, it just, it is just the power of monopoly and standard agreement that they are not willing to change.
Okay. 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 Hopefully we, oops, hopefully we will see it in June at the commission and then three to four weeks go after that. This project began two District 2 commissioners ago.
Yeah, it's, it's about 10 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll push a little bit too and we'll see if we can't get it on the next meeting in May.
We don't want to wait for two more.
Maybe Tamara Tennant will, will move back by then. Okay, any other, any other items?
No, I don't.
You're good?
We've covered everything else.
Okay, all right, so.
Oh, man, I'm sorry. Are we, are we going to do CRA before break or no?
Uh, well, first of all, we had to conclude the conference meeting, which we did now. And, and why don't we do the closed door and then we'll do the CRA.
Okay, thanks.
Since we did advertise closed door. It's time certain.